Well, it looks like we have everyone. So I will call to order the meeting, the August 19th, 2021, meeting of the Hingham School Committee.
Recording in progress.
This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Now, I know Harbor Media is recording. If anyone else is recording, if you could just either unmute yourself if you're on the panel, or if you have your hand raised, I see Rena Patel.
Yes.
Are you recording the meeting?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Jenna Minto from the Hingham Journal.
Yep, I'm recording.
Okay, great, thanks Jenna. Okay, so we will get started. And first, we just want to welcome Dr. Maestas for your first official school committee meeting. We're very happy to have you onboard.
Thank you. Well, you know, it's my second official day. So we're good.
That's great. So what a way to start out. All right, so we have, the first thing we have is a motion to approve the minutes of the August 9th, 2021, school committee meeting. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 9th, school committee meeting.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Seena, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle Air.
Hi.
Jen Benham.
Hi.
Ness Corente.
Hi.
Carlos Da Silva.
Hi.
Tim Dempsey.
Hi.
Liza O'Reilly.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So minutes are approved. Okay, so we have one real agenda item tonight, which is to discuss the possible face covering policy. And our goal tonight is to listen and to discuss the issues. We won't be taking any action as our school committee policy is to have two readings of anything, any new policies before we vote. So a vote on this policy, if the committee is ready, and should we choose to act, is posted on Monday's agenda. And that meeting will be on Zoom as well. And as always, the public's more than welcome to attend. So the policy subcommittee met for an initial discussion of this issue this last week and developed a draft policy, which is in everyone's packet. Jen, could you give us an overview of that discussion?
There we go. Is that better?
Yep, great.
Yes, as Carrie said, we, on August 11th, we held our policy subcommittee meeting with myself, Liza O'Reilly, and Carrie, and Dr. Obula was there as well. Subcommittee meetings are open to public, so we had some members from the public there. The purpose of the meeting was to start the conversation among our subcommittee on possible policy and draft recommendations, and review the recent CDC, Mass. Department of Public Health, the AAP, and the DESI recommendations regarding COVID-19 and masking. The subcommittee agreed to ask the superintendent to form a working group of medical and educational experts to advise the full school committee on policy recommendations based on their expertise. And they formed that group, and they met on Wednesday. And here we are.
Great. Thank you, Jen. I would also like to thank everyone who emailed the committee to share their thoughts. Parents are understandably passionate about this issue on both sides of it. Just, I wanted to note, if you emailed the entire committee but only heard back from Ness, please know that we all read your emails. To comply with open meeting law, we have to avoid deliberating outside of a posted meeting, and that includes over email. So our practice is to always ask the secretary, who is Ness, to respond on behalf of the committee, so the sender knows that the email was received. So just know that we are reading them all, and we want to thank Ness for responding to the many, many emails we received on this issue. So here is how we're going to run the meeting tonight. Several people have expressed a desire to speak to the committee, so we've set aside up to 90 minutes for public comment. Following that, we'll hear from Dr. Maestas and our COVID Task Force about their considerations and recommendations. And finally, the committee will discuss the issue, and we'll see where we are at that point. We want to be clear that while considering any policy decisions, including this one, the committee's overarching goal is to provide a safe and healthy education and work environment for students and staff, while keeping as many students as possible in school buildings and engaged in a productive in-person learning. Tonight, we hope to hear public input to assess the most recent Center for Disease Control, Mass. Department of Public Health, American Academy of Pediatricians, and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recommendations, along with the recommendations of our educational leaders and our COVID Task Force, as we consider a potential face mask policy. I wanted to mention two other points. First, COVID infection rates are currently unstable, so we don't, and we also don't know exactly when students under 12 will be eligible for a vaccine. So any COVID-related policies will be reviewed and updated as COVID-19 and public health data evolves. Also, I wanted to mention that any policies that impact working conditions for our staff are subject to collective bargaining rules. So as I noted earlier, we have set aside up to 90 minutes for public questions and comments on the topic of a face covering policy. As always, we encourage community engagement and welcome questions and comments on the issue. If you wish to speak, please use the raise hand function under Participants. When recognized, we'll ask you to unmute yourself. Please state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, and speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. Our goal for this public comment period is to listen. It's not a time for debate or response to the comments by the school committee, and the school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of these comments made during the public comment period. I wanted to say one more thing before we get started. People are understandably passionate about this issue, and we very much respect the right of parents to advocate for what they feel is the best possible course for their children and their families. And it's our job to take all of it in, the advocacy, the science, input from our educators and our educational leaders, and to make decisions that ensure the safest and highest quality education for all the students in the Hingham Public Schools. The committee will be doing a lot of listening tonight, and we would just ask the same of everyone on the call. At the end of the day, there will be people who are happy with our decision, and people, those that will be unhappy with our decision, whichever way we go. But we're going to have to move forward as a district, and increasing divisiveness is not in the best interest of any of our students. So when someone speaks tonight and expresses a point of view that you don't agree with, just please try to step into their shoes and really understand what their comments, what their concerns are, and why they feel that way they do. That's what we in the committee will be doing, because understanding all of the concerns will be key to moving forward together, whatever the outcome of the face covering discussion. So with all of that being said, we will just go in order on the list. We see some hands up already. Julie, if you could unmute yourself and just let us know your name and address.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. My name is Julie Donovan, Blue Sky Drive. And I'd like to share an opinion that I did share in writing with the school committee, that I would like Hingham to be mask optional, or let families decide the best course of masking for their, for their particular child and their particular situation. This is DESI has asked that schools make this decision at the local level. And the one point I'd like to really highlight, and I consider this very passionately, that Hingham as a community, in particular our school system, really promotes inclusivity. We do an excellent, excellent job in educating our students about inclusivity. And I think now masks is a topic that needs to be added to inclusivity. Some, some people will choose to wear masks, some people will choose to not wear masks. I think it's good for our students and staff and parents to see masks and no mask. Everyone is included in Hingham. We love everybody, we respect everybody. Masks are not going away, COVID is not going away. It'll be an awesome opportunity for the community and particular students to learn to respect all decisions. If someone has a mask, they're welcome in Hingham. If someone does not have a mask, they're welcome in Hingham. So I'm very, very grateful for the opportunity to share this perspective, and I think it's really time that the parents have the opportunity to make the right decision for their own unique situation, for their own children. So thank you for thoughtfully listening to this feedback.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Next, Barbie Lynch.
Hi, my name is Barbie Lynch. I live at 3 West Moreland Road. I'm a Hingham parent, and I support adopting the state guidance, which maintains masked choice. As many of you know, I've become very vocal with this, because I am passionately about it. My child personally had an extremely hard time this year. Many of you might not have seen it, because she's a strong individual, but she cried often, and I cannot do this to her again. I vowed to her, and I promised her that I will not put her in a mask again, because it was detrimental to her. It caused severe headaches for her, it caused emotional issues. As a teacher in the, in the public school for Hingham, as a substitute teacher, I can tell you firsthand, many kids had the same trouble. And we can't be ignoring how they are feeling. We really need to listen to our kids of what they're feeling by telling them just to suck it up, because for the greater good, they don't understand that. Instead, we need to stand up together and do what's right, and, and really listen to what others are saying, follow the data of what long-term mask wearing really does have on side effects. And this is really just from the heart. I think we all need to start working together for the common good of what we all feel, and the fact that we've all had different stories on how COVID has been. My story is different than yours, my daughter's story is different than mine, and we need to respect all of those stories. Thank you very much, and I really do appreciate all that the school board does. It's a very difficult time for you all, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much, Barbie. Julie, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
I'm not sure if you have Julie Donovan. I just spoke first, unless there's another Julie, but I'm just.
Yeah, oh, sorry, your hand was still up. So I think next we have Rena Patel. Or maybe not. Okay, Rebecca Nissico.
Hi, thank you for, I'm sorry, Rebecca Nissico, 5 Lily Pond Lane. Thank you for holding this Zoom meeting and allowing parent comment. This format is challenging for parents, and I just wanted to ask how many people are on the call tonight, because we cannot tell, only you can.
There are 234 people attending, and then the 14 panelists.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I am sorry, I might, I might mispronounce this. Marilla, is Marilic?
Yes, hello, this is Marilla, thank you. I'm at 11 Plymouth River, and there's a couple of things that I would just like to bring to the committee's attention. I'm really struggling to understand the concept of masks being optional in a sense that parents can decide. If you yourself want your child to have a mask on because they are under 12, cannot be vaccinated, and have an underlying medical condition such as asthma, and their pediatrician, the CDC, and everybody says such individuals should not be going indoors without masks because of the increased risk, how is an optional mask policy going to protect my child, even if he puts a mask on? Because as we have all learned when this pandemic started, your own mask protects you, but if nobody else, or if a minority of the people in the classroom are wearing, are not wearing a mask, that is not sufficient protection for him. So I'm struggling to understand, everybody make a choice. We don't have a choice to smoke around other people in closed buildings, restaurants, schools. We don't have a choice to bring peanut snacks into a classroom where a child is allergic. We all, as a community, do things for other people, even though they don't directly impact us. So for example, when I mentioned to my son that masks would be optional, he actually, or might be optional, because we don't know yet, he was concerned for his friend, who lives with his grandparents, and one of whom is immunocompromised and was Zoom-only last year because of that. If there's no mask mandate, he wouldn't be able to come to school. So he started crying, because he's worried. A, he doesn't go indoors at all without a mask, he knows that's a dangerous activity. To put him in a school setting without masks would really upset him. He doesn't think that that's safe. That's all he's been hearing for two years. Two, he's worried about other people, and exposing grandparents and other immunocompromised individuals at home, and how that might impact them. And I think explaining to children that they need to wear a mask to protect others, it's a great opportunity for our town to teach them just that lesson, it's about self-sacrifice. So not only is it consistent with medical guidance to wear masks, the idea that masks are optional, you can wear them or not, is completely nonsensical, because if other people are not wearing their mask in a closed environment, it's not protecting the people who wear a mask. And it's a great opportunity for, to teach kids self-sacrifice, and kids are resilient. You wouldn't believe what they can and can't endure, and we just need to support them in that understanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marilla. Nadita Scott.
Hi there, Nadita Scott, I live at 130 Na Comus. I have twin boys entering middle school who are not yet vaccine-eligible. I also happen to be a cardiologist at MGH, and our team has been at the epicenter since March of 2020, and I've taken care of many COVID patients. I know that the changes in protocols and recommendations have been really frustrating and exhausting for all of us, but really, it's driven by science. We are not in the same place that we were in June, when case rates were falling and the Delta variant was not here yet. We all had a great summer where we didn't have to worry about masking, but Delta is here, and the case rates are going up, even our admission rate at MGH has gone up. Just in the last week, MGH has walked back on two policies, now requiring that we all wear universal eye protection again, and that we all mask within six feet of each other despite vaccination status. So I know we can't live in fear of our children getting ill, and this is probably going to last for a long time. There's been about less than 500 deaths in this country, thousands more children with the multi-inflammatory post-infection syndrome, and innumerable, innumerable kids with the long-haul COVID. I've seen many patients with long-haul COVID, and it's really frustrating for them. But I would say that even one death in a community like Hingham with our amazing resources is honestly unconscionable. The last thing I want to say is about community. I really would like to know that we live in a town where we take care of each other. Many in our community are immunocompromised, and we need to let our kids know that when they wear a mask, they're protecting their friends' family too. We are teaching them lessons beyond this mask, no mask contest, and that this is more than an individual's right, but what is right for the community that surrounds us. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadita. Scott Cullen. It looks like, sorry, Susie Ahora.
Hi, Susie Ahora, 7 Wander's Drive, Hingham, Mass. I'm also a physician, and I have a master's degree in public health and epidemiology. So I do feel like I have a fairly decent critical appraisal of some of the quote-unquote "science" that's been out there. Overall, I just wanted to advocate for masks optional as well. I think we all need to recognize that, you know, as Nadita said, that we can't live in fear, and that COVID is going to be endemic, and that we're all going to need to learn to live with some level of risk going forward. And I think the risk that's out here from COVID has been, you know, very much politicized. Not to negate all the hundreds of thousands of deaths, but particularly for kids, which is what we're talking about, you know, the risks for them are very small. And just to put it in perspective, you know, football, for example, if you go to the American Academy of Pediatrics website, the risk of having a traumatic head injury or cervical spine injury is about 1.7 per 100,000 kids. So more kids are getting cervical spine and head injuries from football, but we don't prohibit them from doing football. There's 160 kids that die every year from football injuries as well, but we don't stop them from doing football. We say, this is, you know, there are risks associated with it, and as a family, you get to decide about whether your kid plays football. For me personally, that's not a risk that I choose for my, you know, my kid to take, but I don't think that I would impose that same judgment on other families, and I think it's a similar situation. It also should be taken in context that the American Academy of Pediatrics should not be the final word on science. This is the same organization that recommended withholding peanuts until kids are three years old, and hundreds, well, not hundreds, thousands, but thousands of kids develop peanut allergies as a result of their recommendations, including anaphylaxis and death. So them being the final word on, you know, what the science is there, is not, not necessarily, you know, valid either. They've also recommended that, you know, babies be put on their stomachs. So science changes, yes, and when we know better, we do better. But at this point, I think we all need to learn to live with some level of risk, knowing that COVID is going to be endemic, just like RSV, just like all these other GI viruses that the kids get, and that we all still send them to school, and we tell them to wash their hands and do the best you can. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Scott Cullen.
There we go, okay, thank you. Yes, Scott Cullen, 42 Allen Street. I am also a primary care physician. You know, I think that it's very clear that a mask optional approach is not going to be helpful. The risk is not insignificant, it is not as low as the death rate from RSV, and it's not equivalent to the risk of traumatic head injury. The fact is that masks don't protect the wearer, they protect those around them. So, and, you know, as much as I respect the anecdotes and the concerns about personal liberty, the fact is that masks are not a diversity issue. People make a choice. We think about diversity issues where folks are not in a position to make a choice. And so we have to respect the science, I think. It's important to understand that. Right now, children's hospitals in Texas and Florida are filling up and are over capacity, and these are the states where masks have either been prohibited or made optional. So, you know, there, and also in regards to the quote "long-term effects" of mask wearing, there is no peer-reviewed data about the long-term effects of mask wearing. That's entirely anecdotal. So I just want to make it very clear that my five-year-old daughter, who's starting school this fall, is not going to be mask optional. She's going to be wearing a mask, and if she, if her peers are not wearing a mask, then we're going to look for alternative options for her. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Heather Chisholm.
Hi, can you hear me? Heather Chisholm, 8 Black Horse Lane. Thanks for, I just wrote stuff down, because I can never public speak. I actually am also a nurse at MGH and have dealt with COVID on the front lines. However, I support adopting the DESI guidance, but not for the reasons that most people are saying. One, I am not anti-mask. I actually have two that are vaccinated, one ineligible. I most likely will choose to send the ineligible one with a mask to school. I am not anti-vax. I do care about others, but I do trust our high vaccination rates, and are specifically really impressed with our community. I do agree that full-time school is first priority. So I don't dispute that masks provide a layer, layer of protection, especially right now with this variant. But I think more people may be willing to follow guidance when their choice isn't taken away. I also think logistically, it would be easy to pivot policy guidance in response to sudden change in conditions, for the better or the worse. I suspect that you will mandate masks in our schools, I will respect that. If this is the case, I urge you to tie this policy to reasonable and measurable metrics. For example, if we have X number of cases in a two-week period, then we amend the mask mandate. Or maybe when all students eligible for vaccine, et cetera, we review the policy. I feel like members of this committee, and also on your task force, have alluded to wanting to mask forever, to avoid any viruses from spreading. This is not reasonable. Zero, zero cases is not reasonable. I think in the medical community, we can all agree that COVID-19 will most likely become endemic. We need to ask ourselves, as a community, what is the end goal? This can become a never-ending circle. At what point do we weigh the cost-benefit of masking? I urge you to also adopt test-and-stay policy. I think that is another layer of protection. And please consider an exemption, or for those students receiving speech services specifically in sped, if they are allowed to unmask when appropriate, or provide outdoor spaces for these services to be conducted. Thanks for your letting me speak.
Thank you, Heather. Andrea Borgman.
Hi. This is Andrea Borgman. I live at 412 Cushing Street. I'm a pediatric hospitalist, and I can tell you that our numbers since the wonderful unmasking at the beginning of summer have skyrocketed. So our inpatient admissions have just revealed that masking works. In other words, when you mask, you don't transmit germs. So I would say that masking just means that you aren't transmitting things. So if you have a mask optional policy, that means that whoever isn't wearing a mask is going to make everybody else and each other sick. So there just has to be that awareness and that acceptance. Whether or not you're going to be giving COVID to each other, along with everything else, you're just going to have to accept that, and that if you're going to be choosing to do that to your neighbors and your friends, you've just got to be really clear that that's what you're going to do. And this has nothing to do with your freedom of personal choice, it just has to do with germs. And, you know, with all due respect, this has been horrible. This is so disappointing. I so feel for the parents who have to tell their children that they have to put the mask back on. This is so incredibly unfair. This is not how it was supposed to be again this fall. And I don't even know what to tell you. As a pediatrician, this is just, and as, you know, as a doctor of these patients who are coming in, this is just not what I want to be doing. And can I tell you something else? We dodged the bullet last year with COVID with children. I felt so guilty, I felt so guilty about all the people, like my colleagues now that I am hearing about, the cardiac floors and Mass. General. You know what? We're not dodging the bullet this year, guys. We're going to have to be taking care of sick COVID kids. This is what I'm getting now for my listservs. I'm having to learn how to now give Regeneron to kids. And I don't want to be doing this, I don't want to. So if it means that we have to do masking for kids until we get that vaccine out to littler ones, I mean, I don't have little kids anymore, I don't know what to say about that. But if we just have to do it now, until we do get everybody vaccinated, and we do change the minds of those who are scared to get vaccinated, then.
20 more seconds, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I mean, if there's anything I can say to just, to just make it easier than I would, I would really do it. But if it's just for a little bit longer, just a little bit longer, thanks.
Thank you, Andrea. Next, Rena Patel.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Hi Rena.
22 Andrew Isle. "The research is unequivocal in terms of the benefits of indoor masking. As a registered nurse, I'm especially concerned at the elementary level with kids who don't have any vaccines. The quarantine procedures you'll have to go through, if someone does test positive, are going to be disastrous for continuous learning. The CDC just came out with guidance that mass students don't need to quarantine, even if in close contact. That alone should make this an easy decision. We're not in the South, as people have said, but without indoor masking, we will be well on our way to replicating the healthcare system disaster that is currently in southern states like Texas, Louisiana, and Florida. A friend of mine couldn't get a bed at a hospital while suffering side effects from her chemo treatments just a few days ago. Florida has had four teachers die just in the last week, within 24 hours, in one school district. Children are suffering from long-term consequences and side effects from the sickness and dying from it. Even one is too many. Dozens of schools have already closed down just weeks into their false start dates due to their inability to enforce universal masking. I'm not sure why there's a debate when medical experts are very much on the side of universal masking. Freedom comes with responsibility. With masking, if people choose not to mask and my child is harmed, who do I hold accountable? My children's well-being is out of my hands if masking is required. I don't even have the option to keep my kids remote this year, and private school is no longer an option. Families who don't have extra cash to go to private school or do pods have to risk their children's lives for them to get an education. What about kids who are immunocompromised? Our kids are required to go to school, and they all have the right to a safe school space. The numbers in our district were so low last year because we were distancing and masking. On the elementary level, nothing has changed. None of these kids are vaccinated. How could they possibly be safer without masks? The risk of variants developing and negating vaccines increases as people continue to pass the virus on. Recently, there's been a significant increase of children concurrently developing RSV and COVID. School-aged children can handle this, but anyone with toddlers or infants at home, they are at a much higher risk of developing severe respiratory distress. Masking and social distancing decrease all risk. Girls have dress codes, and this should be part of the dress code, until we are in a safer space. Eastern cultures have long masked as a society. We absolutely, absolutely should not compromise the safety of the community at large. I hope you will seriously consider that masks are a simple tool to save my lives. Optional masking in dangerous lives and significantly complicates continuity of learning." Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Rena. Jamie Petazano.
Yes, hi, thank you. Jamie Petazano, 8 Independence Lane. Just a couple of points. It was inaccurately said, or the state guidance was inaccurately described. as being that all districts should adopt an optional mask policy. State guidance was that local districts make their own choices. And since DESI is brought up, it's worth mentioning that at this very moment on DESI's website, you can find a featured link to a statement by CDC with updated guidance recommending universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K-12 schools. So if we're going to bring up DESI, let's bring up that featured link. It's, I'm sorry, but it's absurd to describe this as a personal decision. A personal decision is a decision I make that doesn't affect others. It's not a personal decision to stop at a red light. That could harm others. We need to be clear on what it means when you make that decision. And finally, it is very likely that we will have a mask mandate regardless of what you choose at the outset. And so the choice is, we can adopt a mandatory mask policy at the outset and reap the benefits of a safer population and more in-person instruction. Or we can have a mask mandate thrust upon us in an emergency after we have incurred avoidable costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Catherine Whitlock?
Hi, this is Tori Whitlock, 29 Lincoln Street. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler. And so my concern is, it's been very helpful to hear everyone's opinions. And we can keep going with our opinions because obviously COVID is not going away. It's especially helpful to hear the doctors speak. What concerns me is that we're treating this as a black and white situation. Obviously, this is different than in June or different than last year. And we're treating this again politically, yes or no, where we have three different levels of schools, very complicated. You have elementary school who are not vaccinated, middle school who is half and half, and high school who is 90% vaccinated. So I don't understand why we're not having more in-depth conversations, like Heather Chisholm said, about pivotal policies and measurable metrics, because this isn't going to go away. We are probably going to have to mask. And maybe there's a chance that we'll get a time when we unmask throughout the year. Can we start to be more forward-thinking? Because we've lived through this for a year of it not being black and white, but let's develop some policies such as Cohasset announced yesterday about certain schools may need to mask. And if we reach a certain threshold of vaccinations, then perhaps we can alleviate the mask rule. Let's not be so black and white in politics and in policy. Let's start thinking, because this is going to be around for a while. So can we start to see some creative models and some creative? We can work with doctors on this, but I just think to hear people going back and forth of yes or no isn't going to work. We, we need to, we need to model this out like you would anything else in business. And so I'm hoping that there will be some measurable metrics and some that we can use for the entire year as this goes up and down. And it's not just a yes or no choice or a private choice. This is connected to science as best we can and also connected to our children's mental health and vaccinations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tori. Priya Howell?
Excuse me, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thanks. I just wanted to start by thanking everyone on the school committee. I know we all joke about things like who would want to be a superintendent here and who would want to be a principal here. But those are paying jobs and you guys are all doing this for, for free. So I just want to start by thanking you all for, for, you know, just going above and beyond and being so thoughtful about what the right decision is to make. And, you know, like, oh, all of these other callers, I, I could talk about statistics and studies that I've read, but ultimately, everyone knows I'm not a doctor. I'm not an expert. And things that I've Googled don't matter and shouldn't matter. What should matter is the, is the advice that we're getting from experts, you know, both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC and our local doctors. And they're all telling us very plainly that the safest thing for us to do is to have our children wear masks. All of my children are still too young to be vaccinated. And to adopt a mask optional policy, as others have said, isn't my choice. You know, that's putting my kids at risk. And as I've said before, I have two twins who had RSV in their first year of life. And as a result of having RSV in their first year of life, every time they get sick, they have asthmatic flares, they get pneumonia. My two older children might be completely fine with the same exact cold. And I'm up all night with the youngest two, just trying to make sure that they can breathe. And they, they deserve a safe place to go and be educated. The worst thing for them would be to be in a situation where they have to be isolated again with no remote schooling option, because it's not safe for them to be in school. So I, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter what, what I have to say. I'm just sharing my anecdotes, but I do think that this is something that we should just follow the science. And the science has been very clear that at least for the kids that can't be vaccinated yet, they need to be masked and everyone around them needs to be masked so that they can go and be safe in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Priya. Next is Barb McGalvin?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, hi Barb.
Great, thank you. So I'm Barb McGalvin. I live on Tucker's Lane over at Hingham Woods. I'm a Hingham parent, although my kids are out of school now. But certainly I'm a, I'm a resident of Hingham and I support a mask optional program for Hingham schools. It does give the schools flexibility, as another speaker mentioned, that if, should things change, then you can just, you know, make, make them mandatory for that period of time. But I, I am, I read the literature a lot. And as I look to Europe and Sweden in particular, they have had a no-mask policy in schools forever. And yet they do not have a higher incidence of COVID than the United States does in their school-aged children. So, you know, and I think even on the CDC, and I'll, I'll look this up, but I don't think the CDC or anyone else has had a good study comparing masked versus unmasked in children. I, I just don't think it's out there. So I'm concerned. I would like to see parents and children have the option of wearing a mask and not have it mandated. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Maria Zaid?
Hello, hi, I'm Maria Zaid, 287 C Rockland Street. I'll be very quick. I want there to be a mask mandate in schools. My son is five. He'll be going into elementary school and nothing has changed for him. There's no vaccine for him. There's no magic bullet cure for him. If he goes in and he gets sick, I'm scared of what would happen to him. I'm also scared of what he could bring home to his two-year-old sister. So I understand perhaps at the high school and middle school level where kids have the option of being vaccinated, my kids don't have that option. And I really want him to be safe and I want him to be able to stay in school. So I hope that you will just listen to the doctors on this call and help keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Maria. Anya Carpenter?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
I saw, I was not planning on speaking, but I want to bring some context to the situation. So my five-year-old, I'm in Hingham, I live on Blackberry Lane. My five-year-old got diagnosed with COVID over the last couple of days. We are not doing anything. We didn't go to grocery stores. We didn't go to camps. He went to a swim class. He went to a gymnastics class with 30 minutes and he, he got COVID, right? So I think there's two parts. One is if that mask mandate is not in place, like, thank you, God, that he did not go to camps. We would be sitting here talking about that five-year-old in kindergarten infecting all of the other kids. Because while I would have sent him to school with masks, the reality is if he saw other kids without masks, he would have taken it off, right? And nobody would have told him to put it back on because it is an optional thing. And we would be sitting here talking about exposure in an elementary school today. It is not something that is going to be happening far away and it's not coming here. It is here now. We are not, like, we're not going anywhere, right? And it happened to us, so it could happen to anybody. And what I would like to say is, again, luckily, we did not see anybody. And we clearly told our neighbors and that's about it. Nobody got infected as far as we know. But my worst fear was number one for him. But the other one was, God help me, if I had spread it to somebody else, right? We were, the circle of people we saw was super, super small. Everybody else has tested negative. But it is not something I wish on other people. Like, it is not hypothetical, it will get here. It is here. If it's something, and we have very sick family members and people that, again, thank God, we didn't see, but we would have seen them. So while we're talking about what could possibly happen and what's happening in other areas, I want to make sure people understand that it is here and it is already hitting our kids. And if it's somebody that, anybody that knows us would say that we are super, super careful and it caught us, it's going to happen. So I would really, really like for people to first understand that and put the mask mandate in place so that we don't first risk our children, but also make other families have to think about what could they have possibly caused to other people, right? That's my worst fear and something you'd never want to have happen to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Anya. Amy Brown? I'm not sure. It looks like Zoom is having an issue with your account. So we'll move on to Suzy King and come back.
Hi, this is actually Joe King, speaking, Suzy's husband. We're at 503 Main Street, Hingham. We have a seven-year-old about to enter the second grade at East. And just a couple of points. It's been mentioned that they, some, some states have prohibited mask wearing. That's a canard. No state has prohibited mask wearing in this country. The long-term effects that somebody references merely anecdotal. Well, COVID's been with us about 18 or 19 months. Of course, they'd be anecdotal only because we really don't know the long-term effects. We don't know the long-term effects of vaccines yet. And I'm vaccinated, as is my wife. But we certainly don't know the long-term effects of mask wearing. I support the notion that we need some objective data from, from this body, which gives us benchmarks, some light, if you will, which will give us hope. Because I believe that this decision has been made by this school committee. You'll say otherwise, but I don't have my head in the sand. I believe I know where your policy is going. And if, if I am correct, then I would like this committee to establish benchmarks so that we know if a sophisticated and vaccinated community like Hingham responds well with regard to the number of cases and so forth, that we can reverse the mandate that I fear is coming. Just a couple of questions. Again, I'm, I'm operating on the assumption that you've made your decision and it'll be a blessing if, if you haven't, but I believe I know what your decision will be. My question is, has any one of you during the time you've been in the committee, had your minds changed by anyone on this side of the microphone? Probably not. And I think that says a lot about all of you who are sitting on that committee. This is not going to be a pleasant conversation for you to hear and I'll probably be cut off as far as my time is concerned. But I am not a fringe, nutty, conservative reactionary parent. I'm a caring parent. I'm a resident and I'm a taxpayer and I love this town. And I do have empathy for those who have spoken of the, of the crises that their children face. I believe the vast unspoken majority of parents would say that their children have also been affected greatly by mask wearing. And I'll spare you the, the litany of, of things I could point to regarding the adverse impacts, emotional and physical to mask wearing. You all know what they are. I'm a supporter of parents' choice. I've offered my services to the group in, in, in full disclosure. We need, we need more involvement by the, from the community. I would ask you, honestly, all of you, to look to your, look to yourselves
You have 30 seconds.
And try, if you will, to act with humility and understand that opposing views exist. Don't come outside of the echo chamber that you are in and look to opposing views and voices and studies. They're out there. It's not simply a one-way street and I think you know that in your heart. The stakes and the odds are, the stakes are too high to do otherwise. And I would ask that you look to your, look to your, your own humility.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear for, because a couple of people have mentioned this. This, tonight is the very first discussion of the full school committee on this issue. The policy subcommittee did meet, but this is the first time we're having any discussions. Okay, next, Michelle McGuire?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi. Sorry. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that the person who just spoke, I agree wholeheartedly with your point. So thank you. I am also for parent choice. I really think that there is insufficient data to support that mask requirements effectively prevent the spread of COVID-19. I think the data is dangerously misleading and lack basis and evidence. There's also other health risks caused by masks. I don't necessarily need to go into that because I think everybody is aware of a lot of those. But I also think masks inhibit communication and social development. The underlying message that we should be afraid is what that does. I think masks are a cruel device on young kids everywhere. You know, my, I have two daughters going into, one is going to be in kindergarten, one's going to be in third grade. And seeing them or thinking about them being mandated to wear something over their face, whether they want to or I choose for them, that's my, what I hope to be my decision. But I don't want it to lead to other things, like being isolated at lunch, staring at a wall, struggling to understand the social expressions of their peers. I don't think it's an appropriate approach during such informative years. Masks can cause harm to the American psyche, provide little to no medical benefit and are a distraction from more important health policy issues, in my opinion. And I think that's about, about it. So I appreciate your time and listening.
Thank you, Michelle. Olivia Lana?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep. Hi, Olivia.
Hi, thank you all for being here for your hard work and I don't envy any of your positions. I do want to say this, I'm a board-certified physician. I've been practicing for over 35 years in emergency medicine, urgent cares, and private practice. I currently have a practice in Hingham now. And what I want to share is that I understand that people are worried about their children wearing masks. But the reality is, the virus that is amongst us now is so much more virulent than the one we already met. It truly is daunting. What the other physicians have told you is happening is breathtaking, frightening. And if one of the children in this town died because of a vote that happened tonight, all of you won't sleep at night. It's, it's horrible how this mutation has occurred. It didn't have to happen, but it did because we didn't mask. So the problem is, we don't really know what's happening next in terms of the next variant and the next variant. We're not free yet, that's true. And our children are not vaccinated yet. This is not going to go on forever. I understand the fear of some of these parents, we're never going to get out of this. Oh, I'm sorry, I live at 109 Halsted Drive in Hingham over in the shipyard. And I have two grandchildren. I'm petrified for them to not be able to go to school. One is six and one is eight. And they cannot go to school if you don't mandate masks. It won't happen. So it's too unsafe. It cannot happen to those children. So I, I wouldn't put their lives at risk. And the idea that people are proposing that you can wait and see how it goes and then mandate masks, that wait and see will be too late. It doesn't work like that. I, I want to share that I also studied I want to share that I also studied cellular biology in a PhD program. And it's the science, they try to simplify what they put out there so everyone can grab it. But it's very complicated what this virus is doing and the way it takes over, the host machinery and the replication that occurs. We wish it were different, we wish science moved along. We're so grateful the vaccines are working at all. That's a great step in the right direction and the rapidity with which we accessed vaccines.
20 more seconds.
So I encourage you all, as difficult as it is for the parents to mandate masks for everyone so that our children are safe, our community is safe, and hang on, we've got a little bit longer, we're going to get there. But the science community is just not there yet. And thank you for your work.
Thank you, Olivia. Sarah Gorm? Sarah, could you unmute yourself? We're having some issues. How about if we move on and come back? Rebecca Olschager? Rebecca?
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
Hi. Hi. My name is Rebecca Olschager. I live at 39 Kimball Beach Road in Hingham. I have five children in the public school system. And I would like to ask for you to adopt the state guidelines to make masks optional this year. I have done a lot of research, as I know all of you have. Everyone that's here tonight has, I'm sure, done their own fair amount of research. And there are a lot of studies that prove that masks are detrimental. And as a mother of five, seeing each kid deal with masks differently, I would like to say, I have two children that are affected negatively by masks. One of my children causes panic and anxiety. And my son has speech issues. It affects that, affects that from every day, from people being able to understand his speaking. And just seeing people's mouths move is very important. So there's a lot of children that have disabilities that this negatively affects. And I would say the panic and anxiety it causes one of my children is, it's just unacceptable to mandate that. Everyone, there's different risks everyone takes every day. I just don't believe forcing something that's detrimental to our child is acceptable. And to that, and one thing I haven't really heard mentioned tonight is, there's, everyone talks about the science behind the masks, about how it doesn't, it protects the wearer. Biden's top COVID advisor and infectious disease expert, Michael Ostrom, on August 4th made a statement saying that cloth and paper masks are ineffective. He is one of the 13 COVID advisors surrounding Biden. And there's a lot, there are studies that ring to that. I know it's probably not, if you're more pro-mask, what you're probably reading constantly is how effective they are. But there are also studies about how ineffective they are. And if we don't have data that really nails down that is truly effective, I don't think it's fair to mandate that when we know it can negatively affect our children. And I just think, we actually kept our kids out of school last year and homeschooled them due to, for two things, we didn't want them on computers all the time. But also, we know how much masks affected our children. And in June, they came, Hingham administration said masks were going to be optional. And now that's been pulled back to a vote. And I just want to just be heard and ask you guys to please consider allowing parents to make the choices right for their children.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Sarah Gorm, let's try this again. Can you unmute yourself? I'm not sure why it's not letting you do that. Okay, I think we're going to move on to Matt Cosman.
Hey, Carrie. Matt Cosman, 12 Summit Drive. Told myself I wouldn't, I wouldn't speak tonight, but I feel like I need to. I think I've said before, I have three children, who, two of whom are in elementary school, one is going into sixth. The one who's going into sixth actually is 12, he's fully vaccinated. So I understand the K through six is a really hard, I think all of this is a really hard discussion. So I respect that this is really, really difficult for everyone. The K through six is even harder with, without the vaccine optional. We've had a couple of comments tonight, but for the most part, it's been mask optional versus mask mandate. I am really struggling, again, I don't have kids there, but with the seven through 12, when we have 91% of our children in Hingham that are vaccinated, with how we would enforce, not enforce, excuse me, impose a mask mandate on them. So that's one. Second comment I have. There's been a lot of talk of the risk of someone dying from this. And it's awful and it's scary and I don't want to minimize that. But I do think that we need to recognize that there is, there is a lot of other risk that is associated with, with masking. And for the K through six, I understand we're probably going to have them in masks, but I don't think we can just minimize. And I feel like at times it has been, the effects on kids that are dyslexic or have selective mutism. And I think we really, or many other autism, many other, you know, social, emotional needs. And so if we are going to mask them, I plead with you to come up with ways to allow for services, if they're pulled out one-on-one or if they're in, you know, in the classroom further than three feet away, to allow for them to take the mask down and learn in a way that, that will, will, will help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Leslie Whitman?
Hi, Carrie, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. Hi. So I have a son going into seventh, who's vaccinated, and then two children younger who are not vaccinated. And the issue I'm running into is that I would want my son in seventh grade to wear a mask if it was optional. He wouldn't want to, I'm guessing. He's, you know, typical, typical 13-year-old. Sorry about that. And, and my issue, we've, we had COVID. We saw what it was like the week when the elementary schools went back and my kids were home doing worksheets. Some were with COVID and some were just quarantining. And I don't want to do that again this year. So, you know, to be sure that that wouldn't happen or be, I guess, more likely to not have that happen, I would want him masked. And I just, I don't understand how teachers or staff in the middle school or, you know, if this is a situation at the high school would determine who's supposed to be wearing them and who is not. He's, he's not an adult. He does not, you know, in my eyes, have the ability to decide whether or not he should be masked. We would want him masked, if only to keep him in school and not be quarantining, you know, again and again, just because, you know, things will be flying around with the Delta. And I don't understand why, you know, something that nearly tore this town apart over the last year drove our superintendent away. We're not talking more about the impact of, you know, potentially closing schools if we're not masked. It's, you know, the vaccine is wonderful. I used to work for Pfizer, I love that company, but it's proving to be not as effective against the Delta variant as we originally thought. There, I know several people with breakthrough infections. And I guess that's the other point, is that the data that we have keeps changing on how effective it is. So that scares me a lot, too. I, you know, I feel for the families who have these issues with their children and masks. It's not an easy situation, but it's, there's just no way around the science of mask protecting people and especially our most vulnerable, you know, parents at home who have immunocompromised positions, you know, for whom the vaccine is not effective. We have to think of them and obviously, all the children who are unvaccinated. Lastly, I just want to mention, there was a recent New York Times article talking about-
30 seconds left, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple, there are actually a few benefits from wearing masks and how children do adapt and learn in different ways. They learn to read eyes, they learn to read other features in order to, you know, keep learning with their mouths covered. So just food for thought on that last point. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Let's try Brian Donovan?
Hi, Brian Donovan, Blue Sky Drive. Thank you for taking the time to do this. I'd like to pick up on what someone said earlier that I think we should be able to, we have a sophisticated group here to separate between the different schools. I have a daughter in high school. I think the high school should be, we should be able to separate the policy with the high school versus the other ones. The kids are vaccinated or a good portion of them are. Most of them have been out together, All Summer Lawn, Fenway Park, beaches, et cetera. I think what we, what we don't want to do is create a theater of kids wearing, you know, masks, walking into school and take it off the second they walk out. I think we can create a policy that would be, for the high school in particular, mask optional, parents discretion. And I think it would behoove us all to create policies for the, for the different school district, for the difference, for both the elementary, the middle, and the high school. So I think that's well within the guidelines of what you're trying to do here. I think everyone's opinion should be respected, but I also think the, we don't have to have a one-size-fits-all. Governor Baker has given discretion to the local school districts, DUC has. And I think this committee can also create a much more granular policy, particularly for the high school, because vaccinations are available and so many have taken advantage of it, that we can create a much more normal high school experience for them. I think it's incredibly important, given what they went through last year. And so I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my thoughts. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Brian. Let's try Sarah Gorm again. We're going to need you to unmute yourself. I can't do it from this. Okay. Doesn't look like that's working. We'll move on to Jen Mathien.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Jen Mathien, 159 Steiner Drive. Thank you so much for volunteering to take on such an enormous task. And I am pro-mask. I have a six-year-old and an eight-year-old. And, and I want to tell you what I'm not. I'm not an immunologist, I'm not an infectious disease expert, I'm not a cellular biologist, I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm not a virologist. And respectfully, I am, like most people here, a really, really good Google researcher at most. And I think all of us have, have pored through the information that we can get our hands on. That said, at the end of the day, I feel respectfully that we need to listen to the experts. And we have a duty, particularly you as school committee members, have a duty to listen to the experts, including the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. We all, as parents, want to do the best for our children. And I know we all have specific circumstances, little people in front of us, and we really feel strongly that we know what's best for them. But we're not in your shoes, where you need to make a decision for, for all of us. And, and at the end of the day, do I want my children to be masked? No. Do I see that my children have some negative effects from masks? Absolutely. But, but I hope we're not blind to see that we will come out of this pandemic with some scars, that hopefully, hopefully, we can heal after the pandemic is over. Unfortunately, we are still very much in the pandemic, particularly with Delta on the rise. As such, while masks are not perfect, no. And while masks do have some, some, some negative side effects, perhaps, although I have to tell you, I think overall, they really don't, overall. At the end of the day, I feel as though we have a strong duty as a town to be those that listen to experts, not only regarding the pandemic, but just in general. Listen to the people who know the most about this subject. And the people who know about, about how to keep children safe, say at this point, to mask kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Lindsay Cruiser?
Hi, are you able to hear me now?
Yep. Hi, Lindsay. Now I can't hear you.
Hi, sorry, I was having an audio problem.
Okay.
Okay, my name's Lindsay Cruiser and I am at Ten Quill Run. I am speaking tonight in favor of this board adopting the DUC guidance, like a number of surrounding communities have, and not going above and beyond it. Others have pointed out tonight that in June, the school district said that it would not mandate masks this year unless the state mandated them and DUC hasn't. I encourage this board to continue to follow that approach. Summer school has happened successfully in HPS buildings this year with mask optional. A number of camps have also occurred in HPS buildings, again, mask optional. And despite Delta, there have been no issues. As recently as today, students were in the HPS buildings with no masks. We should take this as a promising sign and should continue this and shouldn't pull the rug out from under kids and families who've been relying on the words of this committee and the former superintendent from earlier this year. I know a lot of people have mentioned that we should listen to the experts here. And I forwarded to the members of this committee an article written last week by Dr. Cody Meisner, who's the head of pediatric infectious disease at Tufts Medical Center. And I think his words in there are really powerful. He talks about some of the potential physical effects from masks, which others have touched on tonight. But he also wrote, and I'll read just in part now, about the psychological effects of masks. He says, "The possible psychological harm of widespread masking is an even greater worry. Facial expressions are integral to human connection, particularly for young children who are only learning how to signal fear, confusion, and happiness. Covering a child's face mutes these nonverbal forms of communication and can result in robotic and emotionless interactions, anxiety, and depression. Seeing people speak is a building block of phonetic development. It is especially important for children with disabilities such as hearing impairment." And it ends quote there. I think a lot of us have seen this anxiety and those of us who support having a mask encouraged but a not-mandated environment love our kids and understand what they're going through in this pandemic and encourage the administration to take that into account. I'll just say very briefly, my three kids are in elementary. I feel really strongly that parents of elementary kids should have choice and it should be a mask encouraged but not mandated environment. But as to high school and middle school, I really think that there's no justification for a mandate in a building where everyone who wants a vaccine has had access to the vaccine. If you mandate a mask-
Thank you, thank you, Lindsay. Next, Alex O'Connell?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, I'm on Summit Drive. I have two kids in elementary school. I just wanted to say that I have friends, because we used to live in Atlanta. They all went back to school last week and already half of them have their kids home in quarantine for remote school for two weeks because the schools didn't require masks and it was optional. And therefore, no one wore masks. Why risk quarantine and serious illness? Why risk being forced to go back to remote school? Our kids need to be in person, period. And the only safe way to do that right now is masked. Like many people said, can we follow the experts' guidance? Can we listen to the doctors and nurses on this call who are in our community, who are saying, every expert that spoke up in the beginning of this call said to instate the mask mandate to keep our kids safe. And yet, people are somehow saying that articles that they've found online and, and they're all of a sudden an expert. Let's listen to the actual experts, because this is life and death. COVID is deadly, masks are not. They are a piece of cloth.
You're muted, I'm not sure if you meant to do that.
The host muted me? Can you?
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I don't know where I left off. I guess the point, the point is- I guess the point is, it's worse for our kids to end up in the ER to be sick than having to wear a mask. Most kids I know could care less about wearing a mask for the last year and a half. It's the adults that have some problem with it. So let's follow the science, mandate masks for our kids, prevent Hingham children from ending up in the ER, follow the experts' advice. And God forbid, we lose a student or a teacher because we didn't make a proactive stand now. Don't wait for something to happen. Like you heard tonight, COVID is already here. So I strongly suggest we move forward with a mask mandate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Power?
Good evening, Mary Power, One King Philip Path. I just want to offer the perspective as a former town leader, as the school committee and school administration are making just one more challenging decision out of a series of challenging decisions that you've all had to make over the last 16 months. This isn't how any of you envisioned spending your summer. And our town continues to be so well-served by volunteers. There have been suggestions made during this meeting that decisions have already been made, opinions have been formed. I believe that this school committee is operating in good faith. I believe you are here to listen. I believe you are taking all the different inputs into perspective. And frankly, I don't think that insinuations that anything else is happening is very constructive or helpful. From my perspective, having made difficult decisions, including during COVID, when I chaired the Board of Selectmen, I would suggest that no matter what form a policy takes in terms of substance, that there need to be some metrics because we know that COVID is a changing situation. In terms of a decision itself, the thing that kind of sticks with me is, are we as a community prepared to deal with the inevitable situation when students and staff will catch COVID? I think it's just a reality that that's going to happen. And when I think about all the contact tracing, the quarantining, and most importantly, how do students who have to be out of school for some period of time stay current with their education? You know, I might just suggest you folks might want to think through how all that might happen, because that may help inform the ultimate decision that you're going to make with respect to a masking policy. In closing, I would just say that, you know, in my experience over the 16 months that I dealt with this, I was able to sleep at night, knowing that I did everything I could to protect the citizens of Hingham, all of them, which I saw as kind of my biggest responsibility. And that didn't, you know, there were people whose lives were lost due to COVID. There were people whose families, there have been a lot of interruptions with COVID. I knew I did everything I could and that helped me. And so I would just offer those kind of three pieces to you as you make this decision. And I thank you for the opportunity to not only listen to me, but to listen to all the many different voices in this community. And I just close by saying, I know that you are going to give this careful consideration and listen to all different points of view with sincerity. Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, next we have Drew Wallace.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. My name is Drew Wallace. I have two young kids who attend Hingham South. Last year, we pulled both of our children out of Hingham South. They were in pods, which was a great social experience, but they did lag behind academically. Both kids, you know, this coming year are in IEPs. And obviously, masks will not encourage their academic development. What I'd like to say to any parent here that is for optional masking is that you have the legal right to opt out and request the masks. You know, there are multiple religious, behavioral, medical and social exemptions, and that can apply to a variety of things. Anything from masks to vaccines, to seating assignments or classroom assignments. And the DESE, and the school for that matter, cannot exclude your child from services if you claim an exemption. And with that, you do have rights. You have your own parental rights. And at its foundation, you know, the school committee, you know, does an excellent job in terms of educational policy and programs, but they're not really set up to determine health protocols, particularly ones that are in conflict with the state. And so while I know you can bring out different doctors and such, you know, ultimately, that's not what the school committee is set up for. And there's some pretty clear state guidance, you know, starting at the governor, for where it stands with masks. And so I encourage parents to, you know, based off of what here happens with the school committee, and I know which direction you guys are really leaning. So with that, I encourage parents to email both your principal and your teachers, you know, stating your kids will not wear masks and find an exemption that is suitable for your child. Because at this point, I don't feel like the school committee has done enough to, you know, request data and insight from the community at large. We don't have polling. We don't have data to show, you know, where the metrics are in terms of ending masking or starting masking. It's very ambiguous at best, at this point, to make decisions that are going to affect the well-being of our kids. And so with that, I hope the school committee does adopt the correct policy. And I encourage parents to stick up for themselves and know that they do have rights.
Okay, thank you. Next is Jay DeYoung.
Hi, my name is Percy. I am not sure if I'm actually allowed to talk, but I am an eighth grader. I'm an ongoing eighth grader. And I'm at Hingham Middle School. So I've worked with the school committee before. I love them all very much. You are all wonderful people. So thank you all so much for being here. First of all, masks are the best-known way to eliminate the spread of COVID-19, and especially with the Delta variant. It did get worse over last fall and winter. And the fact of the matter is, it probably will do the same thing this fall and winter. If we say that it is the parent choice, that is not necessarily to mean that the child will make the same choice. So if the child doesn't want to wear a mask, they probably won't. And just from knowing a lot of the kids in my grade and the kids at my school, most of them won't care about the spread of COVID and the fact that they just don't want to wear it. And will just decide that they're too cool. So if we don't mandate masks now, it will happen sometime in the future. And I just would rather learn people's faces later than never get to meet them.
Thank you for your perspective. It's good to get a student's perspective. Next is Penelope Pint.
Just testing, you can hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you to the committee very, very much. I also don't envy you. It's a very tough job, tough decision you guys have to make. So thank you. I'm Penelope Pint of Kilby Street. My son's going into kindergarten this year. And just my two cents on a few things. To the people that are concerned about the mental health effects or any effect of wearing a mask, I just want you to think for a second, like weigh that up against the death of a parent or grandparent or a child. And, you know, I know masks are not great, but it's one of those things, it's like if you have cancer, you don't want to get chemo. Chemo's not fun either, but you do it so that, you know, to control the cancer. So it's, you know, just that analogy there. The second one, and I apologize if somebody already brought it up, is that my understanding is that the mask, wearing a mask, protects other people from your germs or your children's germs. So if we're doing whoever wants to send their kids to school with a mask, the people that choose to send their school with the mask are the ones that are protecting the other people's kids. And I'm guessing the people that don't send their kids to school with a mask are the ones that are also not masking other places. So, you know, you guys do the math, but they're the ones that are most likely to probably have some germs that we don't want our kids getting. And my last point, oh, is that this is, and I know a lot of people have said this, but I just wanted to reiterate, this is temporary. There are countries that are locking down. Nobody's asking you to stay home. All we're asking is, like somebody said, a piece of cloth for a short amount of time. And the sooner we do it and the more people that do it, the shorter this is going to be around, the shorter we're going to be in this pandemic. And we're in a pandemic. Don't forget that. Like, things are not normal. We don't get to wear, you know, we don't get to go out and do the same things that we usually do. So just, I just, yeah, I wanted you to keep that in mind. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. Hannah Connolly? Hannah, could you unmute yourself, please?
It's not working. I'm sorry.
You can hear you now.
Thank you, sorry, technical issues. Hi, my name's Hannah Connolly. I'm at 25 Cedar Street. I just wanted to mention, because I heard a few people talking about, they think that the high school should have a different policy than the younger kids. And I don't think that would be effective in mitigating the spread of this variant, just because of the viral load, on top of the fact that students have siblings in other schools. And therefore, if one person is positive, they're going to go home, potentially spread it to their sibling, and that sibling may go to school, you know, before they know that they are positive, which would put not only the students at risk, but the teachers, the wonderful teachers that are coming in and teaching during a pandemic. Another thing I just wanted to mention was, the sooner that we protect ourselves and protect each other by wearing masks, the faster we're going to be out of this pandemic. At the rate we're going, we are going to have a deadlier variant, especially if not this next summer, but next school year. And we need to protect the, everyone, but on top of that, the unvaccinated students. Because they are at risk of having really, really bad, really, really bad symptoms with COVID. So to sum that up, I just think that masks are really important and that they should be worn by everyone who is in an area, also to help the students who may be worried about their friends getting sick and, you know, aren't able to focus on their schoolwork because they're worried that if, you know, about the kids that are unmasked in the school and the spread and what that can do to the community. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Next is Wendy Driscoll.
Hey, Carrie, sorry, can you come back to me? I have to take care of a kid issue.
Yep. Amy Flannery?
Hi, everyone. So thanks to everyone joining the call and the committee as well. I'm Amy Flannery from Prospect Street. And I am a two-time cancer survivor. I've just had surgery in the last seven weeks. And I have a son who's in the middle school, who is adopted from Russia. We have limited health background on kind of where he's at. We know he was a preemie. He's been prone to pneumonia and strep and a whole host of other things. Can't be considered officially immunocompromised. He struggled with remote learning, I mean, really struggled. He's on an IEP and we want nothing more than for him to go back to school in person. Given our situation, it's a little bit difficult. But forget our situation. I'm more concerned about what's next in terms of variants. Community spread is a huge issue. And the more that the spread continues, I'm very, very concerned that we're going to be facing not Delta, but the next variant, which is, you know, not going to be resistant with our current vaccines. And I just, so obviously, I'm very pro-universal mask. I understand where everyone stands. Our son is on an IEP and speech and language and socialization and other issues are definitely there. But I just feel like we need to end the pandemic. And the sooner that everybody can get on board with masking and the vaccines, the better off we're all going to be in terms of returning to some sort of sense of normalcy. That's all.
Great, thank you. Juliette Felgony?
Hi, can you hear me, Carrie?
Yep.
Hi, Juliette Felgony. I'm on Hursey Street in the Foster School District. Since we had other people offering up their credentials, I'll just tell you as minimally as I can. I work on a medical fraud unit for, yep, the federal government. So my job is to question the experts, as always. I hope you understand where I'm coming from. So, and I'm sorry it's taking so long to prove certain things. I do know that coronavirus has existed since 2002. I know a lot of people know that. So variant, 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 which is why you talk about coronavirus 19. So I think what I want to propose to the school committee is that I don't really think it needs to be one or the other. While I might personally not believe that something I can buy at the dollar store, a three-pack of paper that I can attach to my face is going to save the world, I do understand and respect that some people do think that. So for those who need medically, I'm hearing that there are masks that can, that are kind of like more tightly woven to protect the wearer. And I can get that information too. I don't have it readily available. But I have a family member who had coronavirus in a home with an immunocompromised child, who just proactively, they had him wearing one of these types of masks. And so the adult, not knowing they had symptoms, was kissing the child, hugging the child, had no idea but that because he works out of the home, you know, that they were just proactively masking their child with this mask. So for the people who rightfully have medical issues, I feel like that that is a great compromise, that they could be using these masks that protect the wearer. And honestly, I suspect that there's going to be a handful more who are wearing masks simply because of the general social fear. And so I just, I'm thinking if the school is the only place that they're being asked to mask, like if that's the community place where... Sure, okay, no, I'm pretty much done. But then, you know, I just think that that is a great place to kind of meet in the middle and still be able to not make it a one side or the other. My last request is that I would like for you to consider, even if it means parent funding, is teachers who choose to wear a mask, if we can get them the clear masks so that the kids who do need the social, emotional, mental needs to see...
Thanks. Okay, thank you for your thoughts. Next, let's see, let's see if Wendy Driscoll is ready to speak.
I am, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Thank you, Wendy Driscoll. I have three kids, young kids, in East Elementary. So I think Suzie, Jo, Kate and Michelle McGuire hit right on the head. We all care about each other and we need to respect the adverse effects happening on both sides that are indeed occurring. No one has walked in each other's shoes. There are actual adverse impacts happening on both sides. The science has been very wrong in the past. Can we learn about last year's mistakes with the CDC digging in on six feet when three feet was just as safe and our kids could have been back in school just like private schools in many other states? Seriously? We stood by this when many districts came out en masse with more in-person learning out of the gate. We stalled to return our most vulnerable young students who are trying to learn how to read. We cannot hide from this. It is here to stay. The governor and DSE both know this. It's staying. Desi both know this. It's staying. They knew this when they created the guidance. We can't live in fear. I don't think it's right to say to other parents, other parents, you won't sleep at night if something bad happens. These parents are telling you their stories. They're speaking from the heart. We should not be more restrictive than what the state governor provided in what Desi provided. Other schools around us are maintaining mass choice. Pembroke passed mass choice with a unanimous school committee vote. North Reading practically did the same. Mass choice, a four to one vote. Abington released a memo maintaining mass choice. They're standing by it. BCI did the same. Kingston, Halifax, more and more communities are doing this. Other districts that are right by us look favorable. Duxbury, Hanover, Hull. Rockland School Committee met on Monday and are keeping mass choice for now and made no motion to vote. The superintendent said, I personally agree. The governor is not telling people to wear masks. I don't want to tell people to wear a mask, but I strongly recommend it. There was no motion to change the policy. We don't have to move on this point right now, either. We can sit and we can watch the data and see what happens with our schools. The chair there in Rockland said, we need to do what's best for the kids and what's best for families, and choice is a very big part of that. He's uncomfortable with mandating anything to anybody, considering it's overreach. We need to stay consistent with the state guidelines, which stop short of mandates. Kids need to communicate, and we need to be able to read their mouths. These are not words. These are not my words. They're, they're there.
You have 30, you have 30 seconds left.
It's incredibly inconsistent and jarring when local towns bordering Hingham follow Desi guidance, as stated, while other towns implement more restrictive mask guidance or requirements. Parents should be making the best decision for their family, especially when it comes to special ed. Many states have no mask mandates. Numerous countries don't as well. There's about 10. I can name them all. They're all out there. UK, Ireland, Iceland, Norway. There's a ton of them. The whole guidance agrees. How do we just ignore this? These are real situations. These are states and countries prioritizing children's mental health and academics.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. I'm just going to say, we have about 10 minutes left. So if somebody has made your point already, or has a similar point of view, this is something that's already been said, and feel free to put your hand down. But we'll work through the list until we get for another 10 minutes. Next, Katie Sutton.
Hi, thank you, Carrie. Katie Sutton, 245 Levitt Street. I've been on this call since it started. I'm listening to everyone. The people who are concerned about their children wearing masks, I'm, we're really listening. I'm listening. I believe that your concerns are valid and real. I wish there was a way to make this better for you and your kids, especially the ones who are feeling mental harm and other issues. But the reality is that the long-term damage of wearing a mask is probably not going to cause death. I have a close friend in town whose husband is undergoing immunotherapy treatment for metastatic cancer, and she has children in our schools, and she's terrified by this discussion, because he could literally die if her children bring home COVID. I, myself, am quarantining right now due to a close contact. It stinks to miss my daily activities. I really want to go to the gym. I hate that I had to cancel my plans this week. But the idea that I could literally kill someone if I have COVID, and I'm vaccinated, so it's not going to kill me. But if I go out and I have COVID, and I give it to someone else, they could die. So I just, I strongly support a mask requirement in our schools until circumstances change. If we can save even one life, it's worth it, I believe. Thank you, guys, on the school committee. I know this has been a terrible year, and I know that you thought that there was some relief in sight. And I know that you are listening, and I know that you're trying to do what's best for everyone. So thank you for persevering and always trying to do what's best for our kids.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Elena McDonald?
Hear me?
Yep. Now you're muted.
I think I have to hold it the whole time. Can you still hear me? All right. First, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to hear us all out. You know, everyone has said, I'm sure it's, you know, super hard for you. So just a quick thank you. I just want to point out that I also have a child who's on an IEP for speech and language. She has some sensory issues, among some anxiety. I also made the decision to pull her out of Hingham Public Schools last year and put her in a private pod to facilitate learning that would be most beneficial for her. We made the choice to potentially send her back this year, given the statewide guidance that Governor Baker issued, I believe it was in May. And we were very, very excited to send her back. We very much believe in school community, and we were very hopeful for a, quote, "normal" school year this year. I'm sorry to say, I'm very, I'm disappointed, I guess, a little bit in having to be back here, having this discussion again, as I'm sure we all are. But just a few points I'd like to make. I'd like to say that, obviously, parents of children who are immunocompromised, I'm sure, live with fear all the time, before COVID, after COVID, and in between. And I'm, and I feel for them genuinely. But as a child with, again, anxiety, sensory issues, mental health issues, I can tell you from my parental experience that she has suffered greatly, too. So I implore you to consider that there are children with a variety of, you know, issues or problems or whatever, that could be impacted by masks or no masks. And I think it's kind of, I'm just going to say it ignorant, to try to say, you know, one child's education is more important than the others. And to be frank, the only fair way I see to kind of do this is to give parents a choice. And just some, just some things I want to kind of point out based on other things I've heard so far, following information from the experts. But unfortunately, depending on which expert you listen to, you're likely going to hear a different opinion. So while I very much believe we should be following advice about people who study this and know this most, the reality is, there's a lot of conflicting messages coming out. And I think that, again, this makes it very hard for parents, particularly of young children or children who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated, to figure out what might be best for them. But to that point, we know our children the best. We know whether they have some kind of immunocompromised situation, whether they have a mental health situation. And I heard someone say, masks probably won't kill anybody. But what? But what if a person was significantly ill? That could kill them. What if they're suicidal? What if they were ignoring their, their issues? I just, you know, I feel like at this point, COVID's been going on for almost two years now. And at some point, we need to learn to live with this. And at some point, we need to give parents the discretion to decide what's best for their children. And it's my hope that I don't have to pull her out of her school again, since she's not been there since the first half of kindergarten, and she's about to enter second grade. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Elena. All right. We're going to go on next, and I will take comments with, this is very reflective as to what has been in our inboxes over the past couple of weeks. So we're going to take comments down. We'll have Sky Wiseman be the last one. So Julie Barron?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm new to all this. I don't have like a full speech prepared. But I do have a five and a half-year-old and a two-year-old. And the five and a half-year-old is entering kindergarten for the first time this year, and is super, super excited to go to school and interact with everyone with a mask. So she, she proudly wears her mask. She has no concern about wearing a mask at all, and actually encourages others to wear masks for the benefit of everyone. We have elderly in the family that are pretty close and immunocompromised. So, you know, she, she wears it as, as, you know, frequently as she wants to, and, and, you know, encourages others to wear it. It has an impact on her. I totally hear other people having the concerns, especially around high school, where, you know, if there's vaccination, I think that consideration between high school and kindergarten through six should be part of your, your decision. But I guess from the kindergarten level, if you do have an option for kindergarten, I'm concerned about the fact that she might get, you know, kind of bullied or ostracized for wanting to wear a mask to protect others, when that's not really in spirit of, of what we would want to, to do for the community. So I think encouraging for younger students with a different consideration, I would strongly recommend that. And then the other thing that I wanted to raise is that if we do have masks as optional, and we have some people on the call who had said that they were immunocompromised in their immediate home, would we consider remote options for the next school year as well? And so I just, I'm not clear on that. I'm not sure if I missed something on that. But if, you know, that we did have that option, I think that might be, that might be helpful. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Connolly. If you could say your full name and address, please. Sorry, if you could just unmute yourself. Okay, that doesn't seem to be working. Let's move on to P. W. Howell. Okay, sorry about that. If you could unmute yourself again.
Sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
All right. Peter Howell, 26 Del Brede Drive. So I just wanted to speak to some of the concerns that have been raised by some of the parents who support parental choice, namely that masks present particular challenges for students that have certain learning disabilities, and in particular, children with, with speech issues. I'm a parent of an incoming fourth grader who's been in speech therapy for a while, so I understand those concerns. But I am still fully pro-mask. And the reason that I'm pro-mask is because, you know, if we allow parental choice, it seems clear to me that it's going to mean more spread and more quarantines and more remote learning. And, you know, I think the worst thing for, for many kids, but particularly kids with learning challenges, is, is remote learning. You know, kids need to be in school, particularly kids that need more regular in-person attention from their teachers. I think unfortunately, what, what I've experienced is that our kids were set back because of the remote learning. And I just don't think we should be risking setting them back further, because we want to allow kids to not mask. And the kids who are going to be hurt the most from that are the kids who have particular learning needs and particular learning challenges, including the kids with the speech issues. You know, people have also brought up the psychological impact of masking, and I don't want to minimize those concerns. But I think it cuts both ways. I think it's, you know, got to be really hard for kids who, who either want to wear masks, or who have parents who are forcing them to wear masks, to be around people all day long who are not wearing masks when we've got a pandemic spreading through our community. I don't think that's good for their mental state. So I, to me, I think this is simple. You know, let's, let's mask so we can keep our kids safe, but also to keep them in school. There's a really big milestone coming up, which is the vaccine getting approved for kids under 12. I think we can reevaluate once parents who want to get their kids vaccinated have had a chance to do so. But until then, let's mask, let's stay safe, and let's keep our kids in school. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And so I did notice Sky Wiseman had her hand up for a while, and somehow dropped to the bottom of the list. So if we could just unmute her, and this will be the last public comment.
Thank you, Carrie. All right. So just quickly, I do think that the goal is to keep students in school, full stop. So keeping students in school, masks are going to help us do that. If COVID rears its ugly head, again, with a particular student in a particular classroom, the amount of students who will be quarantined will be much larger than those, than without wearing masks. I would argue that remote learning caused many more issues in terms of both the educational setbacks that we talked about, as well as students' mental health. And we need to talk about that more. I think Mary Power had it completely spot on, in terms of all those things that need to happen, what happens when there's a COVID outbreak. And right now, the school has decided not to actually move forward with remote learning options. So the amount of pivoting that's going to have to happen is, can be monumental. And it's going to be students with a package of worksheets. And the younger students, I would argue, especially your unvaccinated students, aren't able to actually just take and operate a pile of worksheets without parental assistance. I would tell you that you have kids in, in first grade, in second grade, and in third grade, who for almost a year didn't even hold a pencil, because they were not full-time in school from March of 2020 until March of 2021, or April of 2021. And so you had students who were not full-time in school, and barely even had a pencil, because they were typing into Google spreadsheets for their answers to the, to the class. This is first graders and second graders, who don't even have the good fine motor skills that they need. The other thing that we've talked about at the beginning of this call, I think there was some mention about inclusion and Hingham being an inclusive environment. And I do not feel that if we have multiple breakouts of quarantine, that we are providing an inclusive and equitable learning situation for our student population. You're going to have parents who are both working, who are now going to have to, who may be out of the house, and you're going to have students who do not have care. So those students, those parents are going to have to take time off of work, if they can take time off of work, because, in order to enable their children who are, who are quarantining. This goes against Hingham's equity goals, because not every parent is working at home. And this is not going to happen if multiple outbreaks happen, because we're not doing the simple task of wearing masks. I would argue that you...
Right, you have 30 seconds left.
Sure. Masks should be tied to some, to some benchmarks. So I do think that the vaccinations are a good benchmark. We have four schools here that do not have any vaccinated population. I, the middle school, half and half, no. And then the high school, yes, they're, they're doing great. And maybe, maybe there should be a different policy there. But the full policy, mask policy should be looked at in the context of vaccination rates as a community.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone who spoke tonight and who sent emails. It's very, very thoughtful and gives us, I think, a good perspective of where the community stands on this. So now I will turn it over to Dr. Meistis to talk, hear your recommendations.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I'm honored to be here to support the Hingham community. And we have some information tonight that is really derived from a task force that was assembled. And so the information that we have for you tonight is relative to that opportunity for this group to come together. Before I get into the makeup of the committee, I want to kind of set the parameter for what their charge was. You know, one of the things that we have heard for quite some time is, you know, we're educators, you know, we're laypeople. We have all kinds of other tasks to do within education. You know, let's hear from the people that work in that environment, and the research that they bring to the table, and the experiences that they bring to the table. So I think this task force was really trying to get to that point where we can listen to people that actually have a background and see what happens at a ground level with the pandemic, and some other aspects to that. So before we actually got into the discussion about, you know, masks, no masks, what people actually see in their work environment, I actually had to kind of set the stage for what we're dealing with this year. So this is common information that we all need to understand. Okay? The first thing is, the Department of Education guidance was, is highly recommending masks for case six. It's not, it doesn't highly, you know, recommend optional. It's highly recommend masked K to six. So I made that clear to the group, mask optional for vaccinated students, grade seven to 12. The other thing that I want to kind of put on the radar for everyone is the state of, the Department of Education in Massachusetts is no longer recognizing, no longer recognizing online learning or a remote model. So we are not in Hingham planning to have a remote academy. There is no Stewell District in the Commonwealth right now that is actually doing that, that is not required, or it's not going to be recognized. And the reason why I say that is the commissioner has provided some mandates and some recommendations. These are the, are the mandates. The next high-profile mandate that we, you know, discussed in our, our task force is, students are going to be required next year to be in school five days a week, 180 days, with a teacher in front of them. So the goal that the Department of Education would like us to really shoot towards and hit that target is getting kids in school, least restrictive environment, try to make sure that we're getting kids in school every day. Okay? There's another piece that is important to, to put on the table. Masks will be required on buses, and they will be required in nurses' offices. Okay? And that is a Department of Education mandate. We, we heard a lot of great comments tonight, and I want to thank the community. We heard a lot of great comments tonight, and I want to thank the community for sharing your comments. It takes a lot for you to sit through, you know, a couple of hours and have the confidence to get up and talk about what experiences you have. And I really want to thank you so much for that. I think it's good information for all of us to hear. There are a couple other pieces that I want to discuss before we get into our team and also what we discussed. We here in Hingham are moving forward, as of today, with a model called Test and Stay. So what will happen here, it's a lot different than last year, where we would quarantine a classroom. If we had a close contact or somebody was positive, we would have that whole classroom quarantined. Or maybe that quarantine would go deeper into the school population. What we are implementing with a significant support with the Department of Education is we're going to implement a program that's called Test and Stay. So what we'll do is we will have the ability in our schools to test students with a rapid test. So if we have a child that is close contact, we can actually test that child in school. We can test the entire classroom in that school, and we can monitor them while they stay in school. If that test comes back positive, that one child, whoever tests positive, will then have to quarantine at home. But then the rest of the class can stay, okay? We are also going to do pool testing. Pool testing is another important feature, that we can do a classroom pool test. And pool tests actually come back a lot quicker. And we can actually identify if we need to then, in a specific classroom, do the rapid test. So that gives the schools a great deal of flexibility to be able to monitor classes. One of the things that a lot of people may or may not know in schools across the country last year, the significant labor issues with COVID and getting substitutes in classes. If a teacher was positive, or we have to quarantine a whole classroom. There's a ripple effect at all the movements that happen in a school. So one of the things that we will work towards is having very clear protocols on how those things will take place. But keep in mind, any child who is going to be part of this Test and Stay model, it has to be done with active consent, meaning parents have to sign a form that gives the school that permission to test in school. Protocols will be sent home to families so they'll understand exactly how that all works. But the goal that we're talking about here is trying to keep kids in school and least disruptive. Because the options that we have are very limited because the commissioner has been very, very adamant that we need kids to be in front of teachers as much as we possibly can. We also had discussions about lunchtime. You know, lunchtime is one of those areas where, you know, the entire school population or a segment of the population goes to the cafeteria. Well, those are going to be arranged with distancing measures. Kids will eat without masking. But we will orchestrate and design and work with our cafeterias and spaces to actually create an area for kids to eat that there's a level of distancing that we will work towards. So that is kind of the overarching framework. One of the pieces that we're looking into right now with the Test and Stay, our early guidance on the Test and Stay program indicates that if you are unmasked, if you are an unmasked student, and if there was an option to have a mask or no mask, or we don't have, it's optional for students. If you test positive in that classroom, all unmasked students in that classroom will have to be quarantined. Okay, so that adds another layer. So this is, you know, a program that's being put together by the Department of Education with a vendor that Hingham actually used last year for pool testing. But that's something that we are going to implement in Hingham. And the sole purpose of that is to try to minimize disruptions in school, having kids, you know, going to the local, you know, pharmacy to get a test. We want to be able to do that in school. But keep in mind, we want parents to know that it's going to be with parent permission, okay? So, and I want everyone to just, you know, we're working towards all of these, all of these pieces, all right? This is tonight's discussion and ultimate decision through policy of the school committee is really going to give our principals the opportunity to get busy and actually get some of these things in place and actually get correspondence opted to families. So with that said, I want to just introduce the members who actually participated. Some of them were able to join tonight, some just couldn't. But we had on our COVID task force, we had Dr. Katie Donovan. She's an infectious disease epidemiologist with the CDC. We had Principal Swanson from Hingham High School, Mary Eastwood, South Elementary Principal, John Ferris, Director of Business for the School District. We had Tim O'Neill, who's a public health safety policy professional, Dr. Katie McBrien, who is a pediatrician, Dr. Jeremy Warhaftegg, who is a pediatrician, Susan Sarny, who is the Executive Health Director for the town of Hingham. And we had Diane Akenas, who is an elementary teacher here in Hingham. So we had a very long, well, two-hour discussion about, you know, what should we do? You know, what are your recommendations? And what I did is I started the evening talking about K-6 or pre-K-6. You know, what should we do? You know, what are your recommendations? What are you saying? And, you know, there was a great discussion about the compelling evidence that there is around masks. Another really important piece that was made by the doctors that were on the call were the paralleling comments that were made tonight by some of the medical people that joined and commented about the increase of cases that they're seeing in Massachusetts, that they're seeing across the country. And actually, they talked about the difficulty that they're starting to see with patients that they have, that are pediatric patients that are contracting COVID and the difficulties they're having with COVID and respiratory issues. So we had a very lengthy conversation about that. We talked about masks at great length. And the consensus around masks is there's compelling evidence that it works. One of the examples that was provided by Dr. Donovan was an analogy of Swiss cheese. And Swiss cheese has holes in it. And what you try to do with, you know, these, the pandemic defense mechanisms is you try to actually block the holes of the Swiss cheese with layers. And the layers of that Swiss cheese are physical distancing and how we can actually have that precautionary measure ventilation. And I think those two features we had in all our schools throughout the Commonwealth across the country, where we had physical distancing, we did upgrades to ventilation systems. We actually got ventilation systems that needed repair. They were repaired and operational. We implemented masks. We then really looked at hand hygiene and surface cleaning and having that cycle of cleaning on our schools. We then looked at, you know, testing and tracing. We had contact tracing in our schools, in all schools in Massachusetts last year. And then we talked about quarantine and isolation. We did that. Then you talk about how can we get the word out to people in communities on what is good practice, what's going to help to minimize infection? And how good do we do with that? You know, how are we going to actually continue that to minimize infection? And then the last piece of that is vaccine. So when you take a look at that model, that Swiss cheese model, you're adding all these levels of precaution. And when you put them all together, it creates a great mechanism to keep kids safe. So that's the analogy that the medical professionals on our team gravitated to because they have all used that analogy in their practice. They've used it in what they are familiar with when they start talking to families and parents about some of the things that they can do to keep kids safe. But I think it added a level of clarity to why do we have all of these protocols in place? Masks are one of the protocols that is really helping to keep kids in school. One of the things that one of our members mentioned has done a lot of research around the country around COVID. All these protocols have worked. They have worked in different sections of the country. And they've worked because there are a variety of protocols. They've been consistent. And that's why we saw numbers drop through our communities in the spring, early summer. And then when some of those precautionary measures started to fall back, we started to see the uptick and increase of infectious cases across the country. So that was a discussion we had that was really setting the stage for both, you know, the elementary discussion and also the middle and high school discussion. So we got to the point where I asked the team, you know, if you were to give a recommendation to the school committee to move forward, what would it be? What would you recommend? Would it be optional? Would you follow the CDC guideline and just, you know, follow it to the T like some communities have opted to do? Would you just leave it up to parents to make that decision? And the consensus of the group was they would recommend to the school committee that they would have a mask, a required policy for the elementary. And that was, I think they were very adamant about that because of what they see every day, the interactions that they have with families that have been impacted by COVID, by the guidance that they have worked with for years on infectious disease, not necessarily just COVID, but the evidence that they have seen over a series of years, a series of different type of infectious disease situations. So great conversation. And again, I think everyone on the call was very receptive to listening and understanding where different perspectives were. I did present the, you know, a perspective about, you know, how harmful masks are. Are they harmful in your practice? What do you see, what's happening with masks? And I think, you know, they, you know, and maybe someone that might want to speak in a while. But I think the consensus was, you know, we have a significant epidemic that is on our hands right now that the impact of a mask, the short-term impact of a mask is, it's being outweighed significantly by the risks and the ultimate health issues that can result with a child that could contract COVID. And more importantly, how it gets passed from student to student, student to teacher, okay? So that discussion took place at the middle, at the elementary, moved to the high school. And, you know, I talked about the high immunization rate in Hingham. You know, Hingham has a very high immunization rate. And we talked about how Hingham has done their job, how they're doing their job, how they're getting the word out. People are getting vaccinated. Kids are getting vaccinated at, you know, at the ages that you can actually get vaccinated. Concerns about the elementary and, you know, not being vaccinated. So the discussion really came to that point of, you know, there are breakthrough cases of COVID where people that have been vaccinated are getting sick. Students that may contract COVID after being vaccinated still have the ability to pass that on to someone else. So, you know, we went and discussed a lot of the same topics. You know, talked about how can we in schools really ensure that some of the services that are specialized that kids need, how can those continue? And, you know, we have done this in Hingham and other school districts where if there are specialized services that require a child to have their mask off for speech, language, and things of that nature, those accommodations have been made and how we can work with families on those specific issues. But, you know, again, one of the, you know, end result, you know, ask a question to this committee is, you know, what's your recommendation to the school committee? And it was exactly the same for middle school, high school, that they strongly recommend to the school committee that a pre-K through 12 mask option, not option, but P-K-12 policy be adopted. So, you know, we had a very robust two-hour and 15-minute meeting last night. And, you know, I respect the comments that were presented today. A lot of them were similar. But I think it was really important for the school district, the administration, people that were on last night to kind of get a sense where the medical professionals and researchers actually have for background and what they can present to the decision-makers in Hingham. Because it's evidence and it's information that we don't always get. You know, we get reports sent to us. We get all this information that are excerpts from different reports and studies. But to have the opportunity here from healthcare professionals and researchers and people that do this policy setting across the country and here in the state of Massachusetts or the Commonwealth, it's very enlightening to actually have some information that is put into context. Again, it's in line with what was discussed tonight. You know, some of the comments that were made tonight. We have some of those members here that could make it. But Chairperson Ni, I'd like to turn it back to you to see if we might want to involve some of them in that discussion.
Yeah, that would be great. And I just want to thank everyone who took part in this because context is the right word. We get a lot of guidance from a bunch of different organizations, but to apply it to our situation here, it's unique. So, which I guess is one of the arguments for having local decision-making on this. So I guess, so Dr. Donovan or Tim O'Neill, if you had anything to add to about the discussion, your thoughts on this? No? Okay.
I can say something. Sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know if Mr. O'Neill wanted to go. Hi, everybody, I'm Katie Donovan. I'm an infectious disease epidemiologist. Thank you for everything that you're doing for the town, really appreciate it. I did take a couple notes based on the comments I heard earlier that I just wanted to address. Oh, and also, I am a parent of, I have two children in the Hingham Public Schools. And I've been working on COVID for the past, COVID responses at the state level and nationally for the past 20 months. And I also quickly just wanted to empathize with everybody who called in tonight to say that I know it's really frustrating. We're all tired, and we've been through a lot in the past 20 months. And nobody was more upset than me or my colleagues in public health that, you know, we're back to this place. We were all very hopeful and in a better place in June. And it's hard to be back here, and it's hard to be facing these decisions again. And I know it's difficult to, it's difficult because the guidance keeps changing. And the guidance keeps changing because our science keeps changing, that we learn more about the virus and we change our guidance in accordance with that. But just quickly, I wanted to say that we had some questions tonight about the effectiveness of masks. And we do know that the masks work to prevent transmission of COVID or SARS-CoV-2. We know that because we do have studies showing that. My favorite is a study from last year that looked at hairstylists. And that's an MMWR that you can look up. But we do have multiple studies that show that. But they work when both the person who has COVID and the person that they, that doesn't, so the person that they're exposing, when both people are wearing masks, that's when they work really well. There were questions about whether or not there are studies specifically in students and mask effectiveness in students. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of those studies because honestly, last year, almost every student in this country, when they were in school, they were wearing a mask. So we don't have those comparisons. We weren't able to do those comparison studies. So we don't have those comparison, we weren't able to do those comparison studies or many of them because, you know, all the students were masked. So we did, because of my my role as an epidemiologist, I do see a lot of data from across the country. And I am aware of studies in our neighbors in other states where they did try to go unmasked this summer in summer school and it didn't work out so well. They had to, essentially, they had too much, this is, these are in areas where they were fully masked up until the end of the school year. And then they decide to do summer school unmasked. And up until the end of the school year, when all the kids were masked, they had very low transmission. And then unfortunately, when the masks were removed, the transmission increased and they had to bring them back again. And then lastly, so again, we do believe that we saw limited transmission last year in our schools largely because of masks and the other measures that we that we put in place. And then also I heard a lot of recommendations to watch the data and to make our decisions based on the data. And as somebody who has dealt with COVID data for the past 20 months, I love watching the data. But watching COVID data is also really frustrating because it's delayed. So by the time somebody gets exposed to COVID, there's an incubation period, it's about five to seven days, sometimes longer. Then they feel sick for, you know, maybe a day or two before they really decide, oh, wait, you know, maybe I should go get tested. Then they go get tested. It takes time for that test result to come in. It takes time for that test result to get reported to the state. So by the time we at, we in public health hear about that case, they were infected easily like a week before. And so when we watch the data, we're always, we're just always behind. It's been really difficult during this pandemic response. That's been one of the difficulties is that we're just, we're like always behind because our data is just, it's not instantaneous. And so when we do watch the data, what we want to do as epidemiologists is catch it like as as that curve starts inching upward, that's where you want to catch it. And so when we say, let's, when people are saying, let's watch the data, I would say what we're seeing now is where we want to pivot and that's why we're all here. Our numbers are starting to increase. We have the luxury here in New England of seeing our neighbors to the south and seeing what's happening with them. And we can probably expect that this fall as people come indoors in, you know, in our colder climates. So again, I I agree with watching the data, but we all have to understand that that data is delayed. And so when you you need to pivot really quickly when you see an increase in cases, because if you wait, then you're just, you're just behind the ball. And it becomes really, really difficult. So that's, those are all my comments, but I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions if there are any. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
I just wanted to confirm. When you have a vaccinated person with this Delta variant, you can, that vaccinated person can carry COVID. And my my concern is that we do have students who are not vaccine eligible. So what happens to them if they live in the same household? Say you've got one at each level, a high school, a middle school and a elementary school student and the high schooler gets something at school and brings it home to the unvaccinated child. Can that happen and how likely is that with with the Delta variant?
I mean, if I may, from the research I've been reading and the conversations I've had with with medical experts, we have to be humble about what we don't know. And the Delta variant is still new and we're still studying its effects. But what we should be mindful of are the the trends because we're trying to get ahead of the curve and identify the policies that we need to put in place that our situation does not get worse. Taking into account the fact that we're seeing pretty much the same numbers where we were in August of 2020. You know, we've, you know, this this variant is aggressive, it's twice as infectious. And it is creating across the country a situation that is untenable for maintaining a more open lifestyle that we are trying to get to for the past few months. You should be cautious about transmission. DPH came out with new numbers today, 30% of the hospitalizations right now that have been on the increase were involving people who are fully vaccinated. The number of children that are hospitalized has gone up over the past two weeks. And we are seeing anecdotally a significant amount of community spread that's occurring. I, you know, historically, we haven't seen a lot of spread in schools, but a lot of infections do occur within the family unit. It's hard to answer your question, but it's something that you should be worried about moving forward.
Thank you. I had one about, so a couple of people tonight mentioned something that I was thinking about too, and that's metrics. So because I think we would like to avoid having this conversation every month or two as the the cases go up and down. Did you discuss that at all, what that metric might be? If we, is there something we could put into a policy that would trigger masks? And then when we went below a certain number of cases or concentration, then we could say, okay, it's time to take them off.
Yeah, there, we did discuss a metric, possible metric. I know the Department of Education is considering developing something. I know I've talked to the area superintendents and and they would like to actually have some kind of benchmark that would trigger either going, you know, relaxing or actually going one way or the other. So that is something that we would have to rely on some, you know, data experts and medical professionals to help shape what that looks like. But that was something that was discussed last night. And I think there's a great deal of interest to having that for schools to help guide this process. Because if things get worse or better, people are going to want to know what that next level of support would be. So that's something that is out there. It's something that we discussed last night. But I can tell you right now that all the super, and I've probably talked with, you know, 50 or 60 superintendents in the last two weeks, they're of the same mindset of, is there anything out there that would help guide us? I'm not going to say similar to what the state had last year for how we react as a state. But how does that really work in schools because of conditions of schools? So that is something that I think we would, we would work towards. But again, there's nothing on on the docket now or nothing on the table or nothing that's even in draft format to even consider at this point.
I think it would be good to have, to work towards that. It may not be something we want to do until the younger kids are vaccinated too, that that's a consideration too. But but it's something, it would be, it'd be helpful, I think, for families to be able to watch the cases rise or fall and know this is where we're heading and like at least provide some sort of certainty from that perspective.
And a follow up to that, and I know Jen wants to to say something, but I think it would help, it would help our schools immensely to be able to know what what that means to the different populations on how we need to, you know, we talked about that Swiss cheese model. You know, what what layers or what pieces do we need to to add that would help us to do a better job with keeping kids in school? Because that's our our number one goal is how do we continually monitor where kids are? And how are we ensuring that that layering of precaution is intact to the greatest that we can ensure?
Definitely. Jen, do you have something?
Can you hear me? I absolutely value, you know, the recommendation from the medical experts on the task force. And I was just wondering, what was the main factor for your recommendation for the seven through grade 12 students with our vaccination rate being so high among those kids? Was it the quarantining? Is it just the breakthrough cases? I'm just, I'm not quite there yet. I just want to gather just a little bit, a little bit more information.
Sure. I think you're still talking a segment of the population that we're not, we're not, I'm not sure that the schools will get 100% vaccinated. There are some kids that just won't. We have breakthrough cases that we're starting to see. I think there were, you know, you know, three or four different factors that we were taking into consideration. And and that actually really caused this this desire to actually go in that direction. So I'm not sure if anyone else would like to chime in as to what was, you know, triggering your thought around the, you know, middle school, high school. I think another discussion point was was brought up earlier about, I think Ness brought it up, about about high school kids being exposed, actually bringing it home to the family. I think that was another factor that we discussed as well, but I think there were a number of concerns. So I'm not sure if anyone else might want to jump in on that.
I would just say that with the Delta variant, we're still, there's still a lot that we don't know and we're still learning a lot. And so there is a concern about the breakthrough cases, which, like I said, we're still learning about. There's concern about vaccinated individuals being able to transmit to others. And so again, those, what was just mentioned, you know, high school students don't live on their own. They live with younger siblings that might not be able to be vaccinated. And so concern around that area.
I think it's also a more active group that is engaged in activities that that take them outside of the bubble of Hingham. And the communities that we're around do not have the same vaccination rates that we have. You know, Hull is much lower, Wayman is much lower, Sitewood's much lower. The 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 activities like sports and and others that that our kids are going to be involved in are going to put them at greater risk. We've seen that. They're, you know, those are activities that are at a higher risk of transmission. It's wise while we're seeing the data coming on Delta to be more cautious on the policy now.
That makes sense. Michelle, did you have something?
Yes, as usual, I have a lot of questions, zero answers. So thank you for the, for the folks who participated in the advisory panel for Dr. Mestus and this Dr. Mestus as well. I think one thought I have, the Swiss cheese analogy speaks to me. And I guess my one question is, and I was thinking about this with some of the other districts around us, right? That that are at this moment saying that they are going mask optional. And I was thinking that I think one of the things that we learned last year about Hingham is that what we do not have, and Dr. Jamie and John Ferris have been here for a long time, we'll acknowledge, we are not over, we do not have a lot of space in our, in our schools and versus some of the other communities. I think some of the other communities that are going mask optional are also still distancing. But we don't have that luxury in Hingham. So I just want to sort of make, in thinking about the Swiss cheese analogy, if you, if you, I'm assuming all, all the pieces of that puzzle are best to have. If you do not have one of those pieces, so if you have masks and distance and ventilation and hygiene and vaccines, all is very good. But if you are missing one or two or three, is the risk exponentially greater or is at least having masks, hygiene and ventilation better than having just hygiene and just ventilation?
If I was going to have anything other than a vaccine, I would have a mask.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'm thinking about exemptions for the policy. There was some talk about that in the questions and I sort of see two different types of exemptions based on an activity, whether it's, you know, chorus or gym or speech services or or whether it's based on more individuals looking at the special ed community with like communication disorders. And we've had a lot of parents of special ed kids talk about wanting to exempt different types of either students or behavior. I just wonder if you could talk with that. Would you recommend any types of exemptions for students or?
There is, within the state guidance, there is an exemption for for students that show an adverse reaction to masks. There are a number of protocols that are identifiers that are listed by the Department of Education that that can be enacted and we would, we would work with those families to say if they qualify for an exemption. But it's specific as to what they are and we would share that with people that really want to investigate what those conditions are.
Are there any comments about like behavioral? That seems to go for the, you know, the specific types of people who would be exempted. But just based on activity, like I'm thinking of the chorus or the, there was something to talk about other activities.
Sure, sure.
If you wanted to talk.
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for clarifying that. You know, the guidance says today says, and we talked about with the, I met with the principals today, indicates that, you know, PE no mask, well, we have to clarify what that means because some of these activities in PE are are pretty close. So we're going to investigate that. Chorus, there's guidance from the Music Association, the National Music Association that gives additional guidance on that. We're looking at other structures that we put in place last year that might help. Some of these opportunities exist where there's enough space to be able to carry out and have those activities run with appropriate distancing and maybe a mask, maybe not, depending on if it's outside, inside. So those are some of the things that we need to investigate based on how this policy shapes out. And our schools are going to work diligently to get these operational. High school, middle school is a little bit different than elementary. High school has a lot more electives and activities, sports, things of that nature. The high school sports is is going to to try to have a full season. So there are a number of things that are already in place that, you know, kids, I think, are started practicing today. So there are a number of things that we'll be working with, Tim. And and I appreciate the question because our principals want to know as well. But I think a lot of that is is going to be based on what the, what the policy indicates because then they're going to design around that.
Great. If I could just follow up on that too, we heard from a number of parents about special education services. And is it correct that that this is something that the IEP teams will determine, they'll work together if a student needs any kind of accommodation with this?
That's an excellent point to bring up. And I, we have our special education director on here tonight. I don't, excuse me, Susannah, your title is a little bit different for me. But I will tell you what what we we will do is take those into consideration by parent request. And and those are things that we do in our office. So Suzanne, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So in in sticking with the Swiss cheese metaphor, that is how we would think about accommodating our students who may need some adjustments made to how they're being instructed. So we have an ample amount of PPE, which includes the Plexiglas barriers. We have the clear masks. We have two different types of those. We have regular masks. And we can add any additional PPE that we might need in order to help accommodate any circumstances where a student may need to remove their mask. But I, you know, we also need to keep our clinicians healthy and in school and safe as well. Because again, the goal is to keep all of our students in school over 180 days and five days a week. And so I think those determinations will be made individually. I don't know that they would have to go so far as to be on an IEP, especially if it's a really changing landscape and we're not quite sure what's going to be happening here. But our our teachers and providers are really well equipped now to pivot. So if we take speech and language, for example, and we have two students who are receiving articulation services from a speech and language pathologist within their classroom setting, they should have enough space to distance so that masks can be removed or distance with Plexiglas in the center. Or they could even work over the computer within the same room and distance and remove masks. So I I believe that there's quite a bit of flexibility there. And some children may need to do that and some children may not. But we do also need to make sure that our clinicians are front and center in any decisions that we're making to ensure their safety as well.
Thank you. Liza?
So I have a question. Did you talk about getting better at records? Did you talk about getting better at records of who has been vaccinated? Because, you know, we know vaccines, vaccines is the number one opportunity for solving this pandemic, but it also will impact quarantining requirements. It'll just help keep people safer. But we also know, one of the things, I, I got a lot of letters from people stating that the high school is at a 90% vaccination rate. And I'm assuming that that's based on the state data of our 16 to 19 year old measurements provided by the state. But I'd just like people to remember that the incoming senior class are just turning 18 years old now. And so that 16 to 19 statistic is not necessarily the vaccination rate of our high school. So we actually, we, we don't know what that, that rate is. And then the middle school is another half of the six, you know, the, with the 12 to 15 year olds. Some of those kids are high school, some of those kids are middle school. So are we going to make an effort of getting records and then also doing outreach of vaccinating even more kids?
Well, Liza, thank you so much for the question. We did discuss this because we do get the data, but it's, it's combined data. Dr. Jamie, do you want to talk a little bit about your conversation today with the organization that can actually help us with this?
Yeah, so thanks, Gary. So Liza, to answer your question, right now, the state data that comes from DPH through the Maven system is the spanned data that we're getting. We do have the ability through the MIIS system, which is a Massachusetts immunization, something system, which could do by age. But I've been working with the director of the MIS system just today from DPH. And they're having to figure out how to pull the right data because Hangum Public Schools is not a provider. So the, the immunization records are entered by provider. So when in MIIS, they can look at how many pilgrim health have administered, how many, you know, Beth Israel has administered, how many Sel Shore has administered. They can't look at, they, they'll have to run different reports to go in. And they can go in and pull like zip code 02043 and that age and sort of see how many kids across providers got that data. But that's not a report that they can run simply. So if we want, we're trying to figure out as we take each of those ages in those spans and figure, okay, so how many 15 year olds have been vaccinated? How many 16 year olds have been vaccinated? We don't get personally identifiable information, however. So not all of the children who live in Hangum go to the Hangum Public Schools. So we really don't have a solid way to, to and, and sort of the, the ability to ask about immunization records right now. We ask about certain ones under state law that we're allowed to ask and require for entry to school. But the COVID-19 vaccine is not one of those vaccines. So it's a long winded answer, I apologize, but we are trying to get the best data we can that tells us in Hangum, how many, you know, 13 year olds have been vaccinated, 14, 15, et cetera. But it's not an easy data poll from either Maven, which doesn't report that way. We did check with DP, with Susan at the, at the Health Department. And she tried her own way and she, she can only get the grades. But we found out from Dr. McBrien last night, who was also working with Situ, that Situ pulled the same information. When I, when we found out, I think it might have been, I think it might have been Dr. Donovan, actually. We went back to try to figure out, I think it was through MIIS, or maybe it was Dr. McBrien, actually, who said they did it through MIIS. I reached out, a good friend of mine is actually the director of the MIS Immunization Program. Reached out to him and he's trying to pull the right data for us. But he said it's really difficult to do, it's going to take a little time because MIIS is entered by provider and not by location.
Okay, I guess I would make the suggestion that if we're going to do opting in for the testing, which I, I'm all in favor of doing as much of the testing and the pool testing as we can do. And if we can really promote that and get a higher participation rate than we had last year, that would be excellent. And if we could get parents to self-report vaccines when they are signing up and being active participants in the pool testing. And if we have to hire somebody to help with that and using some of the COVID funds that the town has, that I think that would be a good investment for everyone of really getting accurate information. It would help our nurses when they're contact tracing. It would help the community understand and identify a metric if, I mean, I, I know at this point with the Delta variant, it's, it's so unknown. You know, we still, in my opinion, we still need the masks at this point. But if we're going to get to a point of identifying metrics, then I think we would want to know what percentage of our students and staff and everyone in the building is actually vaccinated. So if we need resources to do that, I think we should go to the town and, and ask for that support to do that. So that's my thought on the effort, but I think it's worth the effort.
Yeah, we're talking about the testing program that we're doing. I guess I just wanted to ask some of the experts here. Is there, do you see any motivation for like a flip flop with the Swiss cheese? To say if with some point we go into optional masking, to make the pool testing not optional, to say if you're going to be in school without a mask, then you have to sign up for the pool testing? Or it's even just, I mean, I'll put it out there, I don't think it's the direction we're going in, but say, let's have the pool testing be mandatory for all Hangum students?
The only thing I would say there is pool testing is only to be used with unvaccinated kits. Right? So it gets, a layer of complication gets built in, right? So where we have to know vaccination status to determine eligibility in the pool testing. The other thing, and, and really the other piece that I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but one of the things that I heard last night that really was compelling was even with the test and stay model, and I think Dr. Masis mentioned it earlier. That is predicated on a masking. So, so if you're an unvaccinated student who's a close contact to a positive case, you don't have the benefit of testing and staying if there was no mask. You must quarantine. See what I mean? So, so the testing program itself is not going to be sort of a sort of panacea to help us figure out sort of keeping kids in school. It's, I think, to the, to the analogy that Dr. Donovan shared. It's a part of the Swiss cheese layer that keeps everybody safe and we're able to really test known breakouts and close contacts to test and stay. But you're only allowed to stay if you have a mask on. Right? And vaccinated kids, one of the benefits of being vaccinated is you do not, you actually don't have to test. Because you're vaccinated, right? So, so it goes back to the complexity of the pool testing would likely be used caducex. Where we don't have the same population who's vaccinated, we would probably use the, the the positive testing and the close contact test and stay at the secondary level. Because particularly at the high school with the high vaccination rates. But again, we're trying to determine, to Liza's earlier question, what our population vaccination rates are. And not the spans that we're getting from Maven. So it just, the testing program won't be a cure all either, right? I mean, it's, again, I think to the earlier point, it's more a layer in that Swiss cheese protection.
And Jen?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Bilowaf for bringing that up because that's something that's been a little unclear to me on the pool and the test and stay. And I just think it's, it's a huge point. That the pool testing is only for the unvaccinated. So that, so that's saying that if we had students in, if we had high school students there who were vaccinated and were not wearing a mask, they could potentially be quarantined. And they'd be out for 10 days, correct? Is that what, is that what we're saying?
Say that one more time, Jen.
So if, so if we had a vaccinated high school student in the building without a mask on and they were a close contact of somebody, they would be quarantined, is that correct? Like, are we quarantined, are kids who are vaccinated quarantined?
No.
No, okay.
But what I, I have to go back and, can I double check and get an answer back to you? Because what I'm unclear of.
Absolutely.
It's the, 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 the guidance is dense. So, so when we get into those layers of scenarios, that's where it gets, I'm a little unclear. So what we, what we do know is that if you are vaccinated but are symptomatic, you would go into the testing program. What I'm unclear of is if you're vaccinated and on mask and a close contact, then whether you'd have to quarantine or stay. I, I have to just double check the, the guidance to make sure I'm not.
Yeah, I was trying to find it, figure it out myself too. So it wasn't quite clear to me on that scenario. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Dr. Donovan, do you happen to know, out of curiosity?
So I, I don't want to speak for the state, but my interpretation when I read the guidance was a vaccinated close contact would know, would not have to quarantine.
That's right.
And that, you know, goes along with CDC guidance. The CDC current guidance is that vaccinated close contacts should mask for 14 days and test after, at like three to five days. And Susan did indicate last night that she would be, you know, the town would be recommending that to any close contacts, including student vaccinated. To any vaccinated close contacts, including students that were identified. Is that clear?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Wonderful. Ness?
Just along that same line, why, why would we only have unvaccinated people in the the test and stay? Why wouldn't we have vaccinated students as well? Because we've just said that they can transmit the virus.
If I could clarify, I think the, the protocol B1 for the test and stay, if you were a close contact, you would still be subject to, to having the rapid test administered. So they may not have been masking, but they would, they would have a test administered at that point. That's, that's the whole part of the, of the test and say there's, it's not, they'd have the, the rapid antigen testing. But they wouldn't be subject to quarantine if they were negative.
But they would test.
Yeah.
But they would test.
They, they, they wouldn't do the pool testing though, right? So, so that, that, that's where, that's the differentiation. It's not the pool testing, it's.
Yeah, not the pool testing, just the, just the test and stay.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Michelle, just, sorry, thanks. I just want to clarify this as well, Dr. Mestus. And I know you and I had had a conversation about this. This is for indoors, correct? At this point, right? So still opportunities for outdoor, no masks. Okay, children being children allowed to run around on the playgrounds, children.
So PE is, is in question. We talked about that earlier, we got to, we have to get some definition on that. But recess, outdoor activities for kids, no mask. Again, if kids choose to wear it, that's up to them, but that's not, it's not going to be required.
Right. I guess I'm just thinking about the, sort of the experience of students last year versus what we're looking at for the experience this year and very different experiences, right? Even from special education standpoint, regular, you know, general education standpoint, I think very different, right? We're looking at masks being the one thing without some of the other things that we'd had to do last year. Including distancing, including remote learning. So hopefully, you know, if that, if, if that, that being the case, then that does change, I think, what school looks and feels like for, for most of our students. Which gives me some comfort that the year will be not 2018, but it will be definitely will not be 2021.
That's right. I, I think that's the, the goal is to try to have a sense of normalcy. The, of course, the mask is, is the, the factor that makes it so different. So, you know, but again, it's, it's a lot different than a, a full remote model. Then we transitioned to, you know, all of the, the layers that we put in to get kids back, the distancing. You know, where you, you would have classes in the gym, desks spread out. That, that is not the model anymore. This is a six foot rule is out. We're doing everything we possibly can to have a classroom structured. If we can do three feet, we're going to do three feet to make it feel like a normal classroom. A typical classroom is, is, is pretty close to being three feet apart on a typical, you know, 2018 classroom. But we're going to do everything we can to try to make sure that school looks and feels like, like it did before. One, one of the things that we're going to, you know, a shift, and we, and we did beginning of COVID is some of the learning models that we had, which were small centers and group, and group education. Those are going to have to be modified and, and teachers will be working to ensure there's a level of distance when group activities are actually desired by a teacher. We'll give guidance to teachers on, on, on what they can do and how we can support them through that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we're, and just for folks listening that are still on, I just, we are incredibly, I'm incredibly grateful for the professional and highly qualified staff that we have in Hangum. And, and I, and when I say highly qualified, that's not an opinion, right? That is, that is a professional standard that our Hangum educators have. And we are very lucky to, and fortunate to have that in our district because I think that will go a long way in making this year feel a lot more normal despite the fact that we've been through this curve wall of the Delta variant at this stage of the reopening.
Well, I will tell you from my perspective dealing with this last year. And, and at, at the onset of COVID. The model that has been laid out and described tonight is, is completely different than what we were having to implement. And I think our teachers will feel that they can do what they need to do in the environment that they have in front of them. Remote learning was extremely difficult, coming back was extremely difficult. So I think this year, our teachers are going to have a, a very successful year based on the structures that have been laid out. You know, I think one of the biggest dilemmas we have, you know, having talked with our principals today is, you know, they're, they're very anxious to, to relay information to staff. Because staff, every teacher that I know has, has, is just chomping at the bit to get the room set up and get all these things and all these centers set up. And so I, I think the information tonight has been helpful. Dr. Jamie said something pretty interesting to me this morning, which I was of the same mindset, but we didn't talk about it. He said, you know, that, you know, all these discussions that we've been having with people that actually deal with this every day has been, has given us a different perspective on certain aspects of what we deal with. And we didn't have the opportunity to actually pull this out from, you know, professionals that deal with this all the time. You know, we, it's, it's great to have information, but it's another thing to have information that's research based and actual practical information of what people are dealing with every day. And as we said, we are educators, educate, you know, people in education got into it to work with kids face to face, not through a computer screen. It, it worked, it worked well for some, it, it didn't work well for a lot.
Right. Yeah, I think the main goal is to get kids in school and in-person learning as much as possible this year. And I think everything has to come down, back to that. So I, I don't know if anyone has any more questions or if we want to start talking about where we are with this. The policy subcommittee, Jen, I'm not sure if you want to speak to this. We put together kind of a framework of a, of a draft policy, but we didn't, we didn't make a recommendation as far as whether to recommend universal masking or K, K through six or K through eight or, or optional. So I mean, I think if we could just get a sense of where people's heads are on that. Or I did want to say, and sorry, Jen. We did, one thing we added to the policy was a periodic review. That would automatically every four weeks, we would look at it and see where we were. And we could make whatever changes to give us some sort of flexibility, at least until we could find some sort of metric that we could use. So where are people on this?
You know.
Ness? Sorry, Gary, Gary, did you?
Oh, let's, go ahead, I'll, I'll go after.
Okay, Ness?
I, I am of the view that I, I think we need to put in metrics. We need to have something that is defined as far as when we don't have to wear masks anymore. But where I'm at right now is that we should have everybody masking until every student is vaccine eligible. I don't think it's fair that we are leaving this group of kids open and susceptible to, to getting COVID because they are not vaccine eligible. So I think, again, we should have the metrics around there. And, and I appreciate the feedback that people say, we, we said we weren't going to do this unless the state mandated it. And, you know, back when we said this, the Delta variant wasn't here. We didn't think that we could get a vaccinated person who would then shed the virus to an unvaccinated person. And that's where we're at right now. So that's where my head is at. So yeah, I guess that's my biggest point right now.
Michelle? Yeah, I do. I went back as well and looked at that statement that, back at that June meeting. And that was before Delta variant and all the new information we have. And it was also, you know, it was if Desi says don't wear a mask, we won't wear masks. If Desi says wear masks, we will wear masks. Desi did not say either of those two things. So that is the thing I mean, and what they're saying is strongly recommending at the K through six. And I, I feel like one of the many emails that we got, I felt like to me spoke, spoke to me where it said, I just don't, and I, and I, and I don't think the person was asking it facetiously. I think they were asking it generally, like, I don't understand. If the CDC is saying everybody has to wear masks indoors, why do you guys get to decide whether or not they do? And I say, here, here, I agree with that 100%. I don't know why this is, this is being left to us. It seems that when the medical experts and people who study this and have dedicated their careers to this are saying that people should be wearing masks indoors, it feels like people should be wearing masks indoors. And I mean, I know that is not going to be a particularly popular opinion. Maybe it will be. I don't even know. But we've been tasked with making this decision and whether we like making it or not, which I don't think any of us do, it has been dropped in our laps and we have to make the decision. And I'm having a hard time justifying to myself why I would go against what an expert medical panel has advised us to do. Liza?
I would agree with what Ness and Michelle said. And, and I agree with including the time review in the policy. I think once we get to certain points and once we can create some metrics right now, I think we need to start the year where everyone is masked and the best offense is a great defense. And this will create with all the layers we have, will create a great defense to start the year. Also, the draft policy does include the, you know, exceptions for individual students as we had. And, you know, the, the policy is very similar to the mask policy we had back September 2020. But, you know, as, as Michelle said, you know, the CDC is saying, especially, you know, Plymouth County is at a high transmission rate. The entire state of Massachusetts is now at a substantial or high transmission rate. That wasn't the case even back in July when these Desi regulations were written. There were counties in Massachusetts that had very low to no transmission rates. So it makes sense to have each community have their own rules. We're getting ready to put 5,000 people of students and staff inside of buildings in a couple of weeks. And we need to do everything we can to start the year, to start the year as safe as possible. And, and we can, and I'm all willing to evolve as the year goes on. I would also like to add, for those who commented tonight about, you know, this is in the best interest of the community. I went to the high school fall sports meeting earlier this week. I wore my mask inside the auditorium. But I just want to remind people, Jim Quattramoni closed the session by asking all the student athletes this year to work together to quote, strive for the perfect day this year. And he quoted legendary college basketball coach John Wooden, quote, "You can't live a perfect day without doing something for someone who will never be able to repay you." So I just think we should join Coach Q and all of our high school student athletes who are being asked to live to this of striving for the perfect day, doing something for someone who will never know that you're doing it for some, for them. And that's by wearing the mask. And that's what we've been talking about tonight. This is about protecting others. And I just, for getting started in the year, it's with all the other changes and getting everybody in and adjusting, I think it's the safest thing we can do.
Tim?
I'm in agreement. I know, I know somebody, a few parents came on earlier and said, well, clearly with the school committee already has their mind made up and we're not really listening. And I can tell you that like, I'm, and everyone on the committee has been consistently looking for a reason and looking for evidence that shows unmasking is safe. We have been, I've read every single email people have sent. I have, you know, turned over every rock looking for a way to make unmasking safe. Because, you know, I work in schools too. It stinks. Nothing about it is fair. It is uncomfortable. It inhibits communication. Every negative thing people said about masking is accurate for the most part, with some exceptions. But we are looking for a reason to let kids go to school unmasked and I'm not finding it. I'm finding that the most convincing data is from the people who are the experts and who know the best. And they're seen fairly unified. So I'm going along with, begrudgingly going along with universal masking for people in Hingham Public Schools.
Carlos?
Yeah, first of all, I've been quiet the whole night and not asking questions because I think, you know, a lot of the questions that I had had been addressed already. Up until Monday, August 9th, my mind was very open. And I could have gone either way, empathizing with, you know, both sides. But let me share with you a personal nightmare that became, thank God, a positive thing. But on the night, which happens to be the night of our school committee meeting and was also the planning board meeting, both my wife and I, me being here on the school committee, my wife is a member of the planning board. She actually felt very sick when tested positive. And she has been fully vaccinated. And I'm sharing this with hope emission and using her example so people can be mindful how serious this is. It really doesn't hit us until it happens very close to home. So, you know, can you imagine if we had not changed the meeting to be a Zoom meeting? That even, and I had showed up at the school committee meeting, how many people would have been panicked? And, you know, the level of anxiety would have been much higher. And even though it's south, if the whole meeting was, you know, in person. So thank God she is recovering well. So I want people to know that 10 days is coming up tomorrow and she's going to test again and she's doing very well. But we learned a very huge lesson there. So COVID is not over and we need not to be selfish. This is not about, this is about we. Our children, teachers and staff deserve to go to school without worrying about getting sick or spreading the virus. Today, today are unvaccinated, invaccinated, you know, based on what happened here. And, and the neighbors. People need to be, must be mindful that our primary goal, as has been stated by Carrie many, many years, is to bring our students and keep them in school for productive in-person learning, while also providing a safe and healthy education in a work environment for our students and staff. So I am most definitely leaning towards, you know, the recommendation. And, you know, I respect professionals. And now one thing that people reminded me when I was running for school committee six years ago is that we on the school committee don't have to know everything, that we rely on experts to provide us with the information and the recommendations. And that is why we have a full-time superintendent and so on and so forth. So I appreciate the superintendent actually bringing together a, you know, team of experts to provide us with this recommendation. So I'm leaning, I am, I will be voted in favor of masking. But also to echo what my colleagues have said, I am in favor of putting some metrics in place. For people's knowledge, I'm a state worker. And the governor today sent out, actually signed an executive order mandating that all the state workers on the executive branch be, provide proof of vaccination by October. So my instinct tells me that things will be changing within the next few months. And, you know, people, you know, just need to understand the public building is a public building. Let's protect each other. The mask is not just to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Carlos. And I'm glad weed is on the mend. That must have been scary. Jen, do you want to weigh in or do you have any thoughts on this or? No, no, okay. I just, I want to echo everything that my colleagues have said tonight. And I was thinking what Tim said about looking for any way to not have the kids wear masks. Because that's kind of where I was too. Like, is there, there are hardship. They're, they're not fun to wear. They really do have an impact on an educational experience. And, you know, and especially for kids who just really have a hard time and my heart breaks for them. But looking at all of the information on either side of it, I just, I've kind of, as a school committee member in a different district, kind of describing a framework that I'm personally going to use for all of the decisions we make this year, including this one, which is, does the proposed action support in-district education or does it threaten in-person education? And I think to wait and see and kind of start school and cross our fingers and hope everything will be fine. I think that threatens in-person education and on balance, it's a lesser of two evils argument. As long as, and again, as long as there's a mechanism in place, which we, this policy subcommittee is recommending to keep reviewing this policy as we go. And again, I think metrics are going to be really important. Just looking at, I read an article about that. It was from a parent's perspective. And like, like basically like, I can't believe we're here again. How are we going to make it through? And what, what do parents need to be able to kind of survive this year? And one of, that's what those things they said is they want some, a clear, clear metrics wherever possible. And so that they can, and readily available data. So it's transparent. And so they can see as the cases go up, where things are likely to go and as they go down. Because it's, one of the things that was so frustrating last year was the inability to plan. Things just seemed to change and we didn't know. So I don't know, I'm in favor of starting the year with masks for everyone in the buildings. Michelle?
Thanks, Carrie. I just, you just brought up a good point that I had for Dr. Mestus. Is the panel that you convened, did you ask or do we know if they're willing to continue serving to advise the district on matters that will promote in-person?
After taking five hours of their time in the last two days, and I don't know if tonight's the night to ask, but I will definitely, definitely ask. I, to that point, I think it's important for us to have an advisory group that is, is grounded with the information that, that they have presented. One of the other things that we need to get a great deal of clarity on is we need to, we need to define metric. Because there are a lot of components that actually are tied to what, 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 what that is telling us, you know? So what, what are those bits and pieces that we have to analyze to give us this information? So I think this group, I will do everything I can to keep them together. But I think we may need to add some other people that are data savvy that can, that can actually help us to maneuver this. But I will tell you, there is some motivation from superintendents across the Commonwealth. They are, they are being asked the same exact questions from community, community about, you know, when can we shift? When can we transition? And, and it was brought up tonight by one of the participants in an open, open comment. You know, if things continue to go on this trajectory in Massachusetts, some of this may be, may be beyond our control. So we have to also see what assistance and what data, what tools are going to be made available for us. And we will lobby heavy for that. I think we have done that before. But we're going to continue to go down, down that road to get some support for, for schools.
Yeah, thank you. I will make one more quick, sorry, Tim. No, just on, and to thank you to Tim and Dr. Donovan who are on here today and to Dr. McBride and Dr. Warhoff, who also served and everyone else who served. Because that is one thing, and I think Mary Power mentioned it as well. We are, like, another thing to be very grateful in this town is that there are so many people willing to step up and volunteer. So hopefully, if this existing group is not, maybe it's new participants, additional participants, but hopefully we can get folks who will be willing to serve in that capacity. But thank you so much to all of you who did help with this work. Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to, didn't want the meeting to go without saying. I think one theme that came up in a lot of the letters we received on both sides of the issue are people feeling like they're not, can't safely express their opinion and can't feel very persecuted. And there are good arguments on, clearly, I think we're heading in one direction right now. There are good arguments on both sides of this issue. And I don't think that anyone in our community needs to, you know, be ripped over the, raked over the coals on social media based on what their opinion is. So like, I just occurred, one thing we talked about as listening to people, one thing that everyone has really heard loud and clear is there's nothing more important than in-person learning this year. I think that idea can really bring us together and stop. You know, we disagree on a lot of things as a community, but, you know, we really, time's up. We need to come back together as a community. Like, we can't do this anymore. So.
Right. I, if I could, Carrie, just to add that I agree 100% Tim. And I would add to that, I think that one thing that was very impactful for me of all the letters that we received, just how really respectful and reflective people were in acknowledging that this was a hard decision and they appreciated the work that the school committee was doing, the other boards in town, the educators, the faculty, the staff, the administration. So it was, it was different. You know, people did really seem to understand what the challenges are for all of us. And I think to Tim's point, right, we all need to work together. I mean, we've all agreed that, right, we're, we're trying to find a way to not have to wear a mask. So we all do have a common goal here, right? We just want to get the kids in school, keep them in school and keep them safe. And we can all rally around that. How we get there, there are some things we're need to work on throughout the year. But I mean, I am very hopeful that we can get through this together because we really do have to in the best interest of the students.
Definitely. Okay, so I'm hearing consensus. Does anyone have anything else with the policy? It's in your packet. Any other comments? Yeah, Carlos?
Have you considered, I mean, have you considered, because now the MTA has issued a statement that they are in full support of teachers getting vaccinated. Are we considering, you know, making that a policy or?
That's not on the agenda tonight, but we can, we can talk about it later and maybe put it on in the future. Okay, so if, if everyone's good with the policy, the plan is to, it's on, this is on the agenda for Monday night. Jen, did you have something?
Yeah, just the line on there about unmask outside when social distancing can be observed. I don't know if the, if that was discussed with the task force. It's just, do the students need to be socially distanced outside? Or I'm just thinking of these, you know, little kids out at recess and trying to do social distancing with them. You know, it's their, their playtime. I think we saw that in June. They're out there without their masks on. I know it's different, but I, I wanted to have a conversation about that.
Yeah, if I could, the, the, the line in this particular policy is relative to, very specific with what the state has identified. So this is right from state guidance as to what is allowable when kids are outside. So I think the phrase, social distancing, I think we need a little, a level of understanding of. Social distancing, I think we need a little low, a level of understanding of of. You know, how do how do we monitor that? Right, because kids, when they're outside, they're going, you're going to go do whatever, play on the playground slides, playgrounds. So, you know, we're we're going to have to help our, see, we have to monitor it. And our staff have to monitor it, so we we need some clarity on on how we actually do that. And we can try to get that before Monday.
Liza?
Yeah, and I think we need to talk to the middle school and the high school principals about that too. Because we know that the older kids, as soon as they had a mask break, they were in clusters outside, even though they were outside. And they had to monitor it and that was a challenge last year. That that's just a fact that it was a challenge. So you can add all levels of outside. Of how do we deal with that?
Well, I think the the fact of them being outside is a positive thing for them as far as, you know, taking a mask off. But again, I think what you're asking is what's allowable as far as distancing? What what is recommended? Because our teachers are are going to want to know that, our principals are going to want to know that because that's the information they have to pass on to kids. And again, just like everything we did last year, the partnership between. Student and school and parent and school is hugely important. So that clarity and that information we can share is going to help our schools.
Yeah, I think we should do everything we can to allow kids to be outside unmasked, so whatever.
I agree.
Okay, so I guess if no one has anything else, we can, we can take this up again on Monday and do a vote. I think we've done covered a lot with the discussion tonight, so we'll just see if if something new comes up between now and Monday, we can talk about it as a committee. But otherwise, well, you can just go ahead with that. So, Michelle?
Sorry, we're just quickly, if as we sort of walking through the face covering. Language that was in the materials, if we have thoughts, questions, save them for Monday. Are you, because the policy subcommittee is not meeting again, correct?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, all right, so just bring them Monday?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And maybe you maybe give Jenna a heads up that you're going to ask a question.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Carrie, I don't have, I don't have the agenda open in front of me. Do we have 48 hours on the agenda?
Yeah, we do, that's my accent.
Would be, I'm sorry, so I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
That's the time, so would be okay for me to then bring that up, that under 48 hours. I would appreciate it, so that way is on the record that I would appreciate perhaps entertaining. Discussion about looking into the vaccination. Policy for our teachers following the MTA recommendation.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And I think we'll just, we'll take that to the policy subcommittee probably.
Thanks.
Gary?
There's one thing that I forgot to mention. And Mr. De Silva kind of picked my my recollection. The stay or test and stay model will be implemented for staff as well. So that we will actually have that model available for staff. Because, you know, again, last year, you know, close contact staff. Are we're we're still in that model of 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 quarantine. So we can actually have that available for staff as well, that's part of the application that Jamie submitted today.
That's great. All right, does anyone else have anything for 48 hours? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn with the gratefulness to all the people who stuck here with us through all this meeting, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi, have a good night.
Yeah, Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, and thank you so much to everybody who worked on our task force to advise us on that, it's so helpful. All right, have a good night, everyone, we'll see you Monday.